All the work session to order. Good evening, everybody. Let's start with the minutes. You've been given the minutes and have reviewed them?
Nope.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
A second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Kaz, you want to get into the two issues?
Sure. We have two miscellaneous matters that I want to discuss with you this evening. The first one has to do with interpretation as to how the applicant, and this applicant is the one that was working with Bantuso on the site plan on 1661 Empire Boulevard. We assumed that when they submitted the plan, they had met the green space requirement after we reduced the building down by 484 square feet. We went back and started looking at the plan several days after that occurred, found that we defined it to be in compliance, we found it to be about 2 or 3 percentages off from what it was supposed to be in terms of compliance. We then met with the engineer, Greg McMahon, who's here this evening. His interpretation was the sidewalk was a public entity that should not be incorporated into the calculation for green space, and he admitted that when he made his calculation to get to the 65% usable area for development. Our interpretation was that the green space, regardless of sidewalks or parking lots or whatever the case may be, it's calculated out that the end result of the site has to be 35% green space or open space according to our code. He's asked for interpretation, subsequently so was the staff asking for an interpretation as to how you feel about that. They have indicated that whichever way it goes, if they have to get a variance, they'll apply for a variance, if they don't have to, they'll continue on with their site plan review process. So I guess you saw the letter I sent you. The staff is asking you for an interpretation as to how you feel that that should be calculated out in terms of getting to the proper percentage points.
Can I speak?
Well, let me speak first because I have a feeling we may agree. This is really sort of an application before there's an application. Is that yes or no? Are we on the same page, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. You know what I'm saying? So staff has an interpretation that is consistent with historical interpretations made by staff?
Right. And, you know, contrary to the rule of staff is always right.
I'm all in favor of moving things along, but I think we need to, there's a process, and if there's, somebody feels aggrieved by a staff decision, there's a remedy, which is to file an application with the board.
That's right. That's our interpretation.
That's, you know, I agree.
But I think this thing is obviously ambiguous, because it doesn't mention anything green. It's coming at it from two different perspectives. One it mentions the 65%.
I don't disagree with that.
And it's coming from the other way with 35%. The 65% says structures, parking areas, and load rates, period. Doesn't say including other things. It says those three items to get to 65%. But then it says the remainder of the lot should be no less than 35% open space or landscaped area. So is a sidewalk open space?
And that's what the applicant's requesting.
And that's basically what's open space.
And I would always think open spaces, you know, like, you know, where usals, you know, space that's been used is impervious, you know, the street, that's what we call it, the parking lot. You know, that's an impervious surface, same with the sidewalks, the building, and then everything else would be typically landscaping.
Yeah.
Do you think there could be some more fleshing out in the code going forward? That's the issue behind the issue.
We need to have some more. And I think that's where the applicant's coming from, is, you know, based on what they saw, that's how they interpret.
Given that point, though, about it's unclear, we still, if an application is in front of us, we can't say we're not deciding it because it's unclear, we have to make a decision.
Right.
So I, my thought is file, right, file the request for variance, and I'm sure we'll ask for input from counsel on statutory interpretation and legislative history and all that stuff.
How hard is it to add in, in our rules, sidewalk included?
It takes time, and it may not just be a sidewalk. I mean, they bring up a good point, there might be other things that we have to think about as we move forward as to what should be included and what shouldn't. And we are in the process of collecting several portions of the code that we need to have looked at and revised, and we'll probably be doing that.
Maybe impervious surface is a good term to use for that 35%.
Well, theoretically, if you.
Parking area could be something, could be like a green parking area.
I was just going to say, you could paint an area green and identify it as green space if that were the case. It's probably not the best way to go.
I said impervious surface.
Yeah, but there's, I think there's some, I remember being, seeing applications where they had like a parking area that was not impervious, that the water could flow through.
Right.
So, I mean, but this, staff always interpreted the sidewalk when it's on the lot.
That's right.
If it's a, by, if it was one of our sidewalks on Inseman, they would always have treated that as not open space.
Right. You know, I made that comment in my memo to the fact that, you know, it's a situation where over the years you've had properties that have been reduced in area because of land acquisition from the state DOT, wherever the case may be, no matter how big or small those properties are in the end, they're still subject to variances based on how much of it's green, how much of it isn't.
So in those instances that you cited, the property owner did nothing but sit there and let DOT, or required to let DOT come in, take their land, expand the highway, and then?
We still.
We made them come in for a variance even though they weren't doing anything to their property?
Because the end result, well, they were compensated, they were compensated for their property.
If they were going to do something.
But they still, they were some.
It would be a non-conforming.
Right. And you did, that's a good point. You have non-conforming uses throughout the community that come to you periodically for variances because they don't meet a front setback, and we just had two in the summer.
Because they want to do something after the fact.
And they want to do something after the fact.
But what I'm asking is those instances that you cited, after the state was done with its eminent domain and the property owner was compensated, we didn't make property owners come in and ask for variances unless they were.
Changed something. Exactly. I mean, if it's a lot that was there and there's no change, no.
No, okay.
But if they come in and want to improve the property, which this group did want to do, and they did.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, and as I indicate, I don't think that the variance that they're asking for is that substantial.
No.
But certainly, I think that you're right that they should probably come in and request a variance.
And I know that seems like formal over substance, but it, we could do this every week or every month.
Right.
Come in and say, hey, geez, you know, that's, that's the purpose of this board, is to hear appeals from staff decisions.
Yeah, we didn't take, we didn't necessarily take that approach in Wilbert's. And they came in and asked for a couple of questions.
Yeah, but that wasn't that on something where we had already acted?
It was based on staff requests more than theirs, though, too.
Well, that's true.
And you told them the same thing, though.
Yeah, we did. We did.
Exactly the same thing, filed an application, and we're still waiting to hear, so.
We're being consistent.
I think you're being consistent. I think the staff's been consistent, and, you know, if they want to make that application, they can do it. Now, you know, and the other point we made is that was based on the fact that we're still looking at the size of the building that you agreed to with a 484 square foot reduction, the planning board granted site plan approval for. And they go to 484.5 square feet, that'll bring it back into compliance again, I would assume. So we'll work with the applicants to figure out how we can get there.
Okay.
All right. Does that get you there?
We understand.
Okay. All right. The second item, last summer you approved a 10-foot square sign, freestanding sign in 2217 Penfield Road. The end result was a setback closer to the right of way based on the fact that we all found that they couldn't, they couldn't be visible from the street if they were to go to where they were supposed to be at 20 feet. The plan you saw was for a 10-point square foot sign, which was 2x5, I believe. After that was done, they came back to us, there was actually a tenant in that building other than them, it's a barber shop, and they asked, they asked Andy for a permit to allow the second portion of 2x5 to get to another 10 square feet, which would be 20 square feet. I don't think the staff has a concern for the size of the sign, the fact is, we just want to come back to you to make sure that since you permitted a sign at four and a half feet from the right of way for 10 square feet, are you comfortable allowing us to issue a permit at 20 square feet? 20 square feet is the max that you can have without having to come to the zoning board of appeals to meet that code requirement. The only issue at hand really is the fact that it's closer to the right of way.
And I have no recollection of this application whatsoever, but I guess I would ask you, does the record reflect our minutes, our discussion, anything in the written application that site distance was a concern?
Yes, site distance was a concern. If you remember, it's, it's just across the street from the Aldi's area over there.
Was it doggy?
It was, that's right.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you can see it.
You approved it earlier. And there's Torpe Medical, which is right beyond that.
It was right after the Google concert, that's why.
And your finding was that you wanted to be no closer than the, than the Torpe sign, which we did. So, the Torpe sign, by the way, is 20 square feet, so.
Don't we have the same problem, though?
Yeah, similar. I mean, it's.
Shouldn't they apply for one?
We're saying that we don't think they have to.
Then why didn't you, then why didn't you just give them the?
Because we want to make sure that, I mean, if you think that they should, we will bring them in, but.
If staff doesn't think so, then we don't want to.
They meet the code requirement in terms of the size, but you did approve a sign with less setback. That's the issue.
Well, you know, to me, the key to this is if there's more than one business and we okayed that sign to be in a location, and if the second business is allowed a sign, I would assume that they could put it on that same thing that we allowed the first one.
That's exactly our take.
I would say that staff make a decision.
Whatever, you just have to come forward.
And I, we wouldn't make a move to sign, Mike.
But the business was already there.
They've both been there.
So why didn't they apply at the same time and have us?
I don't know.
But your reasoning is what our reasoning is in terms of, if they came in for another sign that was bigger than code?
Yeah, or closer.
We'd be bringing them in to see.
I mean, we certainly, let me just say this. I don't, I don't think we certainly wouldn't make a move to sign, right?
So, I don't know. I mean, we granted a setback variance.
Right.
Based upon a 10-square-foot sign.
Right.
Now, they want to put more than 10 square feet.
Right.
That's, to me, that's not consistent with the variance we granted. I, I know I sound like I'm an idiot tonight.
No, you don't. I mean, this is why we're asking.
But I think that if they put that up there, even though it's less square footage than permitted, it violates the variance that we granted, or the permit, special permit.
Or modifies it in some way.
Monifies it in some way that.
Could have an impact that maybe wasn't considered.
Right. And that's why immediately, it's closer to the road, so the issue of site and safety comes up, that maybe, maybe, as we voted, we thought, boy, there should be no more than 10 square feet on that sign for safety purposes. I'm not saying that's what happened, but maybe.
Right. So, just to go back a little bit further than that, earlier in the summer, I'd asked you for an interpretation in the staff's process, if there is a freestanding sign that's been approved at some point in time in the past by the board, and another person wants to come in and utilize that sign, because the board was granting a relief to allow it to be at X number of feet in the right of way, our process was going to be to allow that to occur in the future, which makes sense.
It's the same size.
So, the reasoning would be if that 10-foot square sign was there for three years, and somebody came in to Andy and said, I'd like to do 20 square feet now, I think we'd probably just issue the permit based on the fact that the freestanding sign is where it was, as long as it meets the 20 square foot or less. But I don't disagree. I mean, if you want to bring them back in, we can do it.
I think it was not what I wanted.
This is a little different.
I don't think so.
Yeah, you're right. I think if the sign stayed the same square footage, I would say staff go ahead and issue the new permit for the new sign to replace it. If the sign gets larger.
It appears what the letter said.
Well, we're saying that if it meets the code of 20 square feet, we would bring it.
But it might have affected whether we made the decision to.
To offer the variance in the first place, yeah.
So would you feel comfortable having them come back in for a request for a special permit?
Absolutely.
Everybody would, if you want, and that's what we're going to do. All right. That concludes our miscellaneous discussion for the evening.
For now.
For the evening, yeah.
Okay. So we did the minutes. So what are tonight's agenda?
Were we behind, Mike, at a minute somewhere?
You are.
Like, are we still missing?
I think you are.
This was September, are we missing something prior to that?
Yeah, October.
No, I thought we caught up last night.
No, but then we're missing October.
No. Do you have October?
Not yet.
Okay. Yeah, we're on.
I thought you went out of vote.
No, no, no.
All right, so I'm sorry, let's go to the table.
Okay. Let me just get there for you. I'm requesting that you continue the table number one. They are making great progress with the planning board. The planning board is actually in the process of preparing a draft resolution of approval. They're still tidying up some new sets, but I anticipate that probably even as early as next month it could be wrapped up. So I'm asking that you continue the table number two.
So I'll make a motion to table.
A second please.
Andrew's second.
Okay, a motion to table in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, number two, the planning board did recently approve the site plan for the childcare center. We went through to identify what needed to be done. They did not change any setback or any size of the building at any point in time, so what you saw that night that you had the public hearing is exactly what.
Identical?
It's identical.
So, in an essence, when we told them, because usually what you do is you come in and you get the variances from us, then go to the board, correct? That's what we've been doing.
We may not be doing that, because it depends upon the lead agency, and if the lead agency.
But I mean, in the past, we've done it sometimes.
If there's no joint application between the two boards, and the planning board assumes lead agency status, we generally, as a courtesy, well, more than a courtesy, are required to allow them to grant, to grant site plan completion upon you getting the variances.
Right. So I guess my key point is, is that they came to us and asked for it, and we said we had problems with them, right? So they go back to the planning board, and they ask for the exact same thing that we didn't like.
That we already said, yeah.
That we already kind of said no. I mean, are they understanding that?
Well, I.
Do you think I changed my opinion?
I didn't get anything from the board. I didn't get anything from the board, maybe I'm wrong, but I didn't get anything from the board stating that you had a concern for this project. The one thing you did ask for.
Well, we tabled it.
Well, you tabled it because it was, we had to type it as an action, which the planning board did, as a lead agency. You couldn't do that.
All right, but I mean, you were here for the meeting, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I mean.
Yeah, so we tabled the matter, we tabled the matter for a few things, and I'll go with them individually. The first thing was, we had to establish lead agency status, and it was, it was determined that the planning board was going to be the lead agency, so they had to deal with that, and then they had to type the action, which was an unlisted action. The second thing you asked for was, you asked for information pertaining to other daycare facilities in the town that were, that had a number of children higher than what the code required, or were larger than what the code required, and we did, I went through, and we had a list that we put together, there were about four or five of them, I have it right here, actually. There were four or five of them where they were either larger in size because they were part of a church facility, or they were a doodlebugs facility, which is larger, and actually even larger than what you're proposing here. Then the other one, there were several that had more than the number of children committed by code, had been in effect for many, many years, and.
But I think the problem that I had, if their memory is correct, or mine is correct, is that it was an awful big project on an awful small lot. I mean, and it.
Well, it was.
I mean, it should, to me, have been more that they adapt the building to the lot, rather than coming in and asking for everything, and when they found out that, I mean, I'm lead on this, so I think I remember me stating that I'm not very happy with the amount of stuff that they're trying to put on that small lot.
I think.
And yet they go back and not even try, I mean, to correct it in any size or variances or find two more spots or.
Well, I think if you remember, he stated to you that evening, if they had to go smaller, they wouldn't build the project.
Well, and I think I stated, why don't you go in and talk to somebody and see if you could at least come to an agreement of something when you say smaller? I don't know, I mean, there was a lot of covered area where the kids were going to play, and there was a lot of other things that were involved. I mean, not to make an effort does not make me like this any more than I liked it in the first.
It's not that they didn't make an effort, it's just that I think that they were, especially the engineering firm, was told, we're not going to build this if it's not, if it's not this size.
Okay.
That's what it came down to. It was either going to happen or it wasn't.
Okay.
And we, I didn't get much more from the board other than, you know, let's see what the planning board is with it.
Okay, well, in that case, then, I'm going to make a motion to deny all these variances, because I'm not happy that there was no effort made to try and take into consideration with this board, ask them to at least try to. I mean, if they would try to, it maybe would be a different situation, but with, I know.
I just don't remember, I just don't remember this conversation to that.
Regardless of that, I hear exactly what you're saying, but I guess what I'd ask you is to elaborate on your reasons for, on the various setback requests. You've, you said it in a general way, it's too big a building for too small a lot, I get that. And if that's it, that's it. I hear you about, geez, that they didn't go to planning board and shrink it, but it's caused that, they've just made an economic decision, it's either this size or it's nothing. So, balls back in our court, right, say variance. So again, I don't know if you have any specific detail you want to add, or anybody else wants to chime in. Generally speaking, I agree with you is that it's a, it's a lot, and it's, it concerns me, it's a daycare.
Well, I guess my point.
Anything that space should be increased.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, you're asking for two less parking spots. I mean, they couldn't go in and try and arrange something where they could find, let me just then.
Go ahead.
Find two parking spots?
Yeah, they shrunk the building.
Yeah, I mean, if they shrunk the building at all, you're talking about lot area, well then maybe it could have, now it could have maybe eliminated the variance for the two parking spots. If you just shrunk, do you understand what I'm saying?
I fully understand. I just, what I'm, what I'm saying is that I didn't think the board was giving enough input in that regard to the applicant to do that. What you asked, what they had done was, you asked to have an inventory done as to what was out there that was equal to or bigger than, because I think you were concerned that this might have set a precedent somewhere in the town to have that big of a facility on that site.
Well, yes, but on the, on the other hand, I think, and I'm sorry to disagree with you, but I was adamant about how much space was on this little lot. And I think they understood, I think the other board members here understood, and I'm shocked maybe that you didn't understand, that I wasn't happy with the situation of them coming in and saying, hey, I'm going to build this the way I want it or not. And I go, well, you're coming in for a variance, that's not a wonderful attitude to come in asking for variances. If you give me some reason for the variances, you can't possibly find two more parking spots. I understand. If you need variances from one side or the other, okay, maybe I understand, but when you call lot coverage, a little bit of a decrease in whatever the building size was or the coverage at a lot, and then that would help to find two parking spots, two variances could be eliminated, and we're supposed to give the least amount of variance, right, that we can find. I don't see that they put any effort into this to make any changes to their plans in trying to minimize the variance.
When they asked for the variances, they were doing it because the code requires them to have X number of spaces.
I get it.
They didn't need those spaces, they just did it because they needed it.
Well, then you know what the problem is? Change the code. If they don't need it, why do you want 26? See, I only enforce the codes. That's all we do. And all they do is they come in and ask for a variance from the code, and then they have to give me a good reason why they want a variance from the code. Now, if I can try and help them get back into code, that's my job, Jim, okay? And I don't see that they made any effort whatsoever to get back in the code. That's my opinion. And if the board disagrees with me, then we can vote differently.
That's okay.
Okay, well, I'm just stating.
That's why we're all here.
That's right. So, as I say, I'm going to make a motion to deny all the variances.
Jim, you mentioned that it was an unlisted action and that the planning board was lead agency, but was this a coordinated review situation, or was it uncoordinated?
It was uncoordinated.
Uncoordinated? So you, the zoning board would also have to make a secret determination as well first.
I apologize, Pete, I maybe should have made a secret.
Well, I just, it wasn't clear about that.
Right.
So you'd have to deal with secret first.
I wasn't aware it was uncoordinated.
So, should I do the secret first, then? What is it?
Let me get that for you.
Unlisted action.
Unlisted.
It's unlisted.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, it's an unlisted action, negative.
Second. Okay, so on the secret, we have a motion that determines it's unlisted action and that.
To issue a negative declaration.
Negative declaration. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now I'll again make a motion to deny all the variances. The reason is, I think someone could be corrected, and I see absolutely no effort in trying to correct it.
So maybe stated another way is that you feel the applicant hasn't met its burden of proof, given the balancing tests that we have to apply to this, that the variance is appropriate.
I like your lawyer stuff.
Absolutely. Perfect. Mike, anything to add?
No, I mean, I think it's a significant variance, it's 2,500 square feet.
No, they're more than one.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure that we're clear which one you, so you're talking about the building.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, I've seen this flex on parking, you know, the parking one is the least to me, it's the others that I think are more important to me, that the parking one, you know, it wasn't very amiable.
Yeah, but my point was, if they tried to correct some of them, it may eliminate others that we don't even have to grant in there.
True, true. Like, if you made the building smaller, you could eliminate a lot of these.
Right, you can put two parking spaces.
Okay. Anybody else?
The front setback variance always concerned me from a safety perspective, it's a daycare, and we're asking, you know, they're going to be very close to the road. That's always concerned me, and it sounds like they just, the planning board was okay with that, too.
I have the resolution right here.
Yeah, I read the resolution.
And with all due respect, this board did not give much input to the planning board regarding its concern.
Understood, and I, I hear you.
Well, we also didn't grant the variances the night we had the public hearing.
Well, you couldn't, you, yeah, you wouldn't have done that, I think, isn't it courtesy to that board anyways?
So, um, my, my comment, in addition to the one about the burden of proof, is that what we have here is a situation where the applicant has come in and said, this is the project we would like, and for economic reasons, among others, but for economic reasons, we need these variances, or else we're not gonna make a go of it, or even attempt to, from a financial standpoint, a business standpoint, which is absolutely their right to do so. That factor is a factor that we can and should consider, but in my opinion, it doesn't, it doesn't tip the scale in their favor on, on these. So, um, it's just, they, they are entitled to make a profit, they feel they can't do it except with this current plan, then they should look for another location.
Okay, so, I'm just concerned, so if, if they abandon the project, you know, that space is right next to a residential neighborhood, it seems like that could be a really good project there, too, like, I'd rather see a daycare than something else.
What do we have there before, a bank?
Bank and a restaurant.
And neither one of them came to fruition.
And remember, no, nobody came out in favor or opposed to this application.
Yeah.
No, no members of the public.
Nobody on the street, nobody in the immediate area. I think everybody agrees with your thought process, that it's a good transitional use from a residential use to a commercial use.
Well, we don't, we don't know that. The absence of members of the public doesn't mean that we can conclude what you just said.
But that's what's, that's what's weighing on me.
We had three public hearings on this, and nobody came to any of them.
I understand. I understand.
And I, I truly don't recall us giving that clear a negative signal, I gotta say.
I, I agree with that, but I don't, I don't think that that's all that relevant.
Okay.
Either way.
Yeah, it's, we, no matter what we said, we have been asked to consider these variances. Um, you know, whether or not they are flexible, or they're willing to, as, they don't have to be. They're, as, as Jim has said, they're entitled to say, this is the project, the planning board's approved it in its form. Doesn't mean we have to. But they don't, they're not required to come in and say, we'll, we'll live with a smaller building, they don't have to. And we're not required to grant variances.
I think so. Understand.
No. Anyhow, so we have a motion to deny. Did we get a second on that? No? All right, I'll, I'll second it. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. So, tonight's agenda.
I'm sorry, did you vote? Are you in favor or opposed?
I, I was in favor of the motion to deny.
All right.
It's three to two. It's about one minute after seven. Does anybody have any burning questions on any of the applications for clarification? Nope?
No.
All right, and let's just, everybody okay going right into the hearing?
Absolutely.
Let's do that.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penn Field Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting's gonna take place in two parts. The first part will be our public hearings. We'll ask the applicant to come up to that podium there, give us name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief being requested should be granted. Once the applicant is done with the presentation, board members will likely have some questions of the applicant, and then we'll invite anyone in the audience that cares to come up and do the same thing, give us name and address, and speak about the application. After the public hearings are adjourned, we'll take a brief recess, and then we'll reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on tonight's applications. Members of the public are certainly welcome at both the public hearings and the deliberations, although generally speaking, the deliberations is time reserved for communications amongst board members, board members with staff, and sometimes with our council. As I said, you're welcome to stay. We have a medium-sized agenda tonight, I'd say, but if you can't or don't wanna stay, you can call tomorrow and find out what action the board took on any particular item. We like to point out every month that we think the town does a very good job of notifying citizens in the town about applications, so that citizens come in and speak their mind if they choose to do so. The town does that by mailing postcards to neighbors that live within a certain number of feet, by advertising the agenda on TV, by posting it on the website, and posting it on the bulletin boards here, the old-fashioned way, as we say. So we certainly welcome anybody's comments and input. It makes, makes our job easier, honestly, and we appreciate that. And having said that, I ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. And Jim, maybe we have the first application, please.
Yes, sir. Item number one, Christian Kraft, 1598 Highland Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14618. Request an area variance from article, I'm sorry, from chapter 250-5.1 out of one of the code, to allow a storage building with less front step back than permitted at 1600 Dublin Road. Property is owned by Oak and Apple LLC, and is zoned RE2, SBL number 125.10-1-10.4, application number 17Z-0064. Before we get started, I'd like to just let the public know that during the site plan review process for this property, there was a stand of trees along the right-of-way of Dublin Road that had been maintained, for some reason, by the town for several years within the right-of-way, and I think it was a, an issue that the planning board was hoping to save those trees. The applicant was more than willing to do that yesterday, from what I understand, the trees were cut down, but they were not cut down by the applicant, they were cut down by the, our DPW department in a trimming process, which the person who did it had no knowledge of the fact that they should have stayed in place. So that activity had nothing to do with the applicant, it had nothing to do with that operation, it was a function of the town of Penn Field that, that did that activity. So, just for the public's information. And with that, I'll let you start.
Well, I, I, Jim, if people have further questions about what happened, which I could tell by some of the reaction they made, what would you advise them to do?
I would advise, if you, if you do have questions or concerns about it, you can contact our highway department. If you contact 340-8632, they would be happy to discuss the matter with you in more detail. But it has nothing to do with the applicant or the application at hand.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Link Swedrock with BME Associates. I'm here on behalf of Christian Kraft tonight. Also with me is the contractor, Charlie Kenton with Cutmar. Tonight, we're here to request an area variance from 50 to 44 feet for a structure that was a utility structure that houses our utility equipment along Dublin Road. The structure was required to house the meter and the backflow prevention device, and also the RPDA for the fire system, for the fire hydrant that's up there for the building itself. The structure was shown on the approved plans as a heated structure. It wasn't proposed as a hot box, so therefore, from a code standpoint, we require a variance from the 50 to 44 foot for this type of a structure, because I, it's not the, a hot box structure per se, it's a wooden structure that we were trying to, the owner wanted to try to build a building that fit in more with the character of what he was trying to do in the neighborhood, and also to sort of match the building that he was building up on top of the hill. So it's a wood structure, wood framed, it's heated, it's insulated, it has to be heated and insulated with electric as well, just to make sure, because of the water equipment that's in there, we gotta make sure we keep it, we keep it warm. Also, so the health department and the water authority also want that structure within close proximity to Dublin, it requires access to read for the meter, for the water, as well as grading of it and drainage from the structure, to make sure if there's a catastrophic event inside of it, that the water can drain away and get out from the structure itself. The, um, the structure, like I said, was shown as a heated structure originally. We provided, what we did is, we provided you some photos with the application, I brought some extra ones with me that show sort of what a typical utility structure looks like. It's typically, the hot box is a big metal, metal box, and it's pretty unattractive, it shines in glare, it's like a mirror kind of thing. This, he, the, this owner and applicant wanted to do a wooden structure to, to provide a little bit better, fit in better with the character of what he was looking to do in this agricultural district. The property is zoned RE2. I also, I'm gonna, I can hand these out, I got a couple of pictures of, basically, what I've got is, we overlaid a hot box structure in where the wooden structure is, just so you can sort of get a feel for what the structure could look like, just, if it was a metal, because I guess, the metal structure would probably wouldn't.
Thank you.
And I have an extra copy just in case.
Give you a good one today.
Sure.
Here you go. I have extra.
Thank you.
So, again, the, the plan was approved with the heated structure, I think there was just some confusion about a heated structure, like an enclosed, wood enclosure versus a hot box structure. So obviously, we have the, the wooden structure here, it's built, it's heated, it's, and what we're here tonight to do is request a variance to allow that structure 44 feet from the right-of-way instead of 50 foot, where it's currently at. And it, and it, and it was actually shown on the approved plan to be 36 foot from the right-of-way, so it's actually eight foot further back.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do you have another one of these?
Another?
The pictures?
I've got.
No, no, I wanna give you one if you don't have one. Can you put it up on the board so the camera can see it?
Sure, absolutely.
You know, we're talking to a lot of constituents.
I gave all my copies out.
Okay, good. Good call.
Sort of gives you an idea of the, you know, so if it was a hot box structure, it would just be a, you know, sort of a metal square without a roof, same size structure, the structure would have to be the same size as it is now. We just built a wood one, and it's got a roof on it to try to.
I have a question.
Sure.
If, if this is drawn to the scale it has to be, you don't have equipment in the actual gables of the wooden structure, do you?
No.
I mean, it looks like what you did was square off the, the tip of the wooden structure, and make that thing a heck of a lot bigger than it would have to be if, I mean, it's a minor point, but it looks like you're.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we just sort of tried to make it, to scale it similarly, I wasn't, I don't think we, we were trying to just sort of give you an idea of.
Did you see what's inside of it? Huh? Did you see what was inside of it? Yeah, but I'm just saying, basically, you'd have this, if you squared off the wooden building.
It would, it would only be as tall as the, the bottom of the.
That's, I'm just, okay.
To clarify, yes. It looks like it's, I think, it's just, might just be the size one we had, and we were trying to size it length and width, and it just ended up how high it was.
I think your point's still well taken, but.
So, so just to clarify, this is required by the Monroe County Water Authority, right?
Yeah, we have to have it in a structure.
And it basically prevents water from being contaminated, is my understanding.
Right, the, 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 basically, we're protecting the public water system. It has to be within.
Right, so it has to be there.
We can't put it up at the building, because then it has to be within close proximity, because they have to have access to it.
Okay.
And we also, you know, we also need to, we also have pressure issues out there with the hill, so we also have to keep it down as low as we can, because there's losses through it. And the reason why the hydrant is there is because by the time we get up, we start losing some pressure, and so it's located for engineering reasons, for pressures, grades, drainage.
Right.
As well.
Is there any issue with access with that shed versus the hot box that would, that might have been original? How do, how do people get, how do you, how do you get into it if you, if you need to?
There's, there's doors, there's a main door and everything, and, yeah, you still have the same amount of access that you would have.
And the water authority has the same amount of access?
Right, it's the same, we still, it was still approved, it was shown on the plans and approved by the health department.
Okay.
As we've constructed it.
Okay.
And we've reviewed, you know, had to review it, and the hot box is basically just a standard structure that's accepted, and it's got like a heated package and things. But we've done this quite a few times, the hot box is, but it's, it's not a aesthetically pleasing structure.
Right.
So we, we've, we've tried to do a lot of, a lot of different applications and things we've tried to do like this, to try to make it a little bit better of a structure, so it sort of matches in with the building.
Okay, are there any other, are there going to be any other sheds or accessory structures?
Just the barn that's already there and, and the, and the building itself.
And do you know, maybe this question, have you or has the town received any comments about it?
I don't, I haven't.
We haven't received any comments, but I have had interaction with some neighbors who wanted some information about it.
Okay.
And I'm sure that we spoke earlier.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have.
Any other board members? Go ahead, Cas.
I have two questions. Number one, is the building gonna be utilized for any other purpose other than the protection of the RPZ? It's not gonna be used for storage or anything of that nature, other than for the RPZ system, backflow prevention system?
Well, it has, it's got, so it's got a domestic antifreeze, so it's got, for the water system itself, and it may end up with a, it has a booster pump for the domestic as well.
I think you're misinterpreting what I'm asking.
Okay, sorry.
You're not gonna utilize it for any other purpose, other than the protection of the utility? It's not gonna be used for storage of equipment, or materials, or.
No, everything.
Personal information, or whatever they might have.
Everything for his operation is gonna be up at his, up at his building.
The second comment I have is, it looks like, you know, they were moving along, is there an intent to do any more improvements to that building? Is it gonna be stained, or improved in any way?
I, I have to, I'll have to turn that one over.
What was that question, Cas?
I just wanna know if it's gonna be upgraded a little bit, stained, or painted, or something?
Well, yeah, it's, it's gray right now, right? This is not the color.
Thank you. So this, this is gonna stay that color and not change?
Yeah, that's an older.
Very good.
Picture, and it's doing improved.
Yeah, I have those pictures, I missed this one. Thank you.
You can just hang that on the board, it's probably easier, then everyone can see it.
Probably put that up there, too.
Do we have one of these hot boxes in town anywhere?
All over the town.
All over.
If you have a commercial operation, you have a hot box. A lot of them are hidden underground, or, you know, adjacent to the ground, so they're, there's one at Baytown, as you come in and out of that area, towards what used to be Blockbuster in that area, there's an island there with one in it, but they're all over the community.
You kinda don't notice them?
Geez.
Yeah, this is, I, I got a question. This is a fairly, almost every commercial building has that, that six or eight-inch pipe, right, with a valve, and a backflow preventer, and a screener, and.
Eight-inch, yeah.
Yeah, right.
There are some distance requirements.
You probably have to speak into the mic.
Go into the mic and give us your name and address as well, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Charlie Kenton, Cutmar Development, 5133 Westlake, Canadaigua.
Okay. So go ahead, I'm sorry, finish your, your answer there.
No, there are some distance requirements inside for safety when working on this kind of weight of equipment, it's 800 pounds.
Absolutely.
So, if it has to come apart, if something goes wrong with it.
Is that the minimum size it could be?
I'm sorry, yes.
Is that, yeah.
That is correct, yeah. In order to feed, it's an eight-inch main, so.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
No.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application?
We have two. Amy Ranieri.
Okay.
And then following Amy would be Kevin Gallagher.
Hi, my name's Amy Ranieri, I live at 58 Edenfield Road. My backyard, that's my entire view, is Oak and Apple. Every time I look up the hill, there's another building being put up there. Not surprised we're here for a variance, I just didn't think it would be this soon. They haven't even completed the project, and they're already asking for, for variances. Oak and Apple's been fully aware of all of the allowances and restrictions, because we've been going over this application for months, and months, and months. I feel that the first variance being granted opens the door for them to keep coming back here for all types of other variances. I think with the neighborhood, they need to be a good neighbor, follow the rules, and move in.
Wait a minute, can, yeah, we may have questions for you. Go ahead, Mike.
Would you feel more comfortable with the hot box structure itself there?
Because you don't need a variance for the hot box, that's the issue.
Yeah, I mean, there's just, it just, every time we turn around, there's another, it seems like there's another building, and there's trees cut down, and that's all you're, all we're seeing is structures.
The tree issue, I already explained.
I understand.
The building was always on the site plan, it was approved as that location. They decided not to put the hot box in, because they thought it looked ugly, and was gonna detract from the neighborhood, and create even visual glares to the street and everything else. If they put that in, they did not need a variance from the town or a building permit. When they came in and wanted to upgrade that to make it look more residential or agricultural, we were the ones that required them to come in and get a variance for that. So if they built the original box, they wouldn't be here tonight, but you'd, you'd have a big silver box sitting out in your backyard.
But it would be lower.
Well, it'd be lower, but it'd be shiny.
Right.
Yeah, it'd be the difference of the roof.
I think it's an aesthetic issue.
You'd probably have two, three feet different.
Yeah, it, it would be almost as large as that wooden building, without the peaks, okay? Because you, you have to have room inside. I mean, I was a.
I understand that, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that, it's just, you know, I, it's, here comes a variance, and I've spoken at the other board meetings about my concerns with Oak and Apple. I, I think that they, they knew where they needed to put it, they knew what they needed to do, I think that's too large, there's, there's enough buildings up there already, we've got stone things and roadways and everything else, and, you know, that's my view of my backyard, I'm just speaking as a, as a resident, that that's my view.
So you would rather have the silver box instead?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to answer your other point. The fact that we grant a variance if we grant it, doesn't mean we're more likely to give another variance for the same property.
I understand that.
We look at each one, you know, based on the facts and that situation, so, one thing doesn't have anything to do with the other.
I, I totally understand that.
Okay, we had somebody else?
Kevin? Kevin Gallagher, 1973 Dublin Road. I have some pictures, one copy, I can put that there, I have a copy of my written statements also. I will, I'll show additional pictures. I've come here to express my opinions relating to the issue of a variance for 1600 Dublin Road, based on information best of my knowledge. First, the legal notice mentioned a storage facility, not a hot box. Residents were not properly notified of the actual true topic. If the topic is storage, no additional storage is necessary. I wanna review the documents that have been made, made available to me through a request. First, I wanna critique the pictures of hot boxes submitted by Oak and Apple. They appear to depict industrial or commercial facilities with dimensions of about six feet
by eight feet by 18 feet, 864 cubic feet. This is an industrial, commercial, if this is an industrial or commercial project, it violates the zoning. If it's a residential agricultural project, then appropriate scaled hot box would be much smaller. I'm providing an example of a smaller hot box. This is available online, it's in my documents there. I know of no examples of overly large utility structures such as this within the town within residential or agricultural zones. The structure is not consistent with the neighborhood or community. A review of the short environmental assessment form. Part one, question three B, total acreage to physically be disturbed. They listed 4.2 acres. I believe that acreage is significantly larger because the disturbed area has to include the original site boundaries, the sewer work across the street, the pond area, and the expanded, the expanded area back over the steep slopes, EPOD. The pond area was not included in the original proposal and was not properly reviewed. In conjunction with sewer project, contractors had not installed preventive stones or screens prior to the washout on June 15th. That washout included water, mud, soil, and other debris. The disturbance area over the EPOD should have never occurred. These are both damages to the environment and I'm providing some pictures. These are pictures of the washout in front of some of the houses, pictures of the day after and the level of mud, and this is the picture of the contractor installing the stone and the silt the day after the washout. I'm also providing picture of the disturbance area and also the site plan. It shows a large area in the back, this is supposed to be Environmental Protection Overlay District, steep slopes, but they disturbed it with their construction equipment and In this image, you can also see the reflection of water. This is a picture of them constructing a retention pond. So those are the examples, those things were not in the original site plan, and those represent changes, destruction to the environment. Back to question 13 of the assessment form, I believe, question A is incorrect. The commission ditch seems to lie within an adjoining land. Question 17B, I believe there will be stormwater discharge directed towards the southeast where there is no conveyance system. Question 18, this appears to be incorrect because they have created a retention pond. Part two was not available for me prior to this meeting for review. Any and all errors in the submitted forms must be addressed and corrected. Because this action is within a designated open space and 4.2 acres exceed 25% of 10 acres, this action must be treated as a type one SEQR. Both the washout and the EPOD incursions are damages to the environment. The purpose of an environmental review is to protect the environment and that has not occurred. To quote the code, 617.1, authority, intent, and purpose. B, in adopting SEQR, it was the legislature's intention that all agencies conduct, conduct their affairs with an awareness, they are stewards of the air, water, land, and living resources, and they have an obligation to protect the environment for use and enjoyment of this land, of this and all future generations. The damages that occurred demonstrate additional cause for this to be treated as a type one SEQR.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Are you talking about the whole project or are you talking about this specific structure?
These-
What you're talking about now?
The S, the requirement for environmental review, as far as I know, was requested for this variance, was provided for this variance. These are documents that I reviewed in, that are connected to this specific variance.
All right, how are they connected?
How?
Yes.
The town has made that connection, so this is-
He's reading from the short form, it's part of the application.
Okay.
And that's, that's part of this variance, is the, I'm assuming based on their presentation that they are necessary and part of this variance request, so that's why I'm addressing The variance request mentions a setback for an accessory structure within, from 50 to 44 feet. This isn't really about setback, this is more about the existence of the building. The structure built is not a typical hot box structure and is out of scale with the environment and the equipment. This is an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or community. The building does not fit the character of the area without buildings, even if it is agricultural style. That is, if they're saying it fits the environment currently or previous to this building, there was no building there. I've seen no mention of the conservation easement or open space within the documents reviewed for this variance. The open space status is identified in the comprehensive plan and the open space plan. The open space is mentioned or referenced 20-plus times in the conservation easement. The board needs to be aware of this, and it's an error for that information to be withheld. The aspects of the conservation easement that are important include the preservation of views, viewscapes, view sheds, and vistas. The building is within the farm area of the conservation easement, and as this is not a farm area type building, it is strictly prohibited. Because these topics were extensively reviewed, all parties involved should be aware that a granite variance violates the conservation easement. This is detrimental to nearby properties and poses a risk to drivers. The intent of the project is a building where hard alcoholic cider will be produced, consumed, and sold. Many drivers exiting this location will have consumed alcohol, and the interference of, with the sightline by this building will make it worse. A smaller or underground hot box would not contribute to this risk. I believe the benefit of a hot box sought can be achieved with a much less adverse method, so it's as a small utility hot box or better, an underground hot box with a The requested variance is substantial because it is the difference between a building and no building. The applicant built an obstructive building and that is not allowed versus an unobstructive utility hot box. Regarding adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions of neighborhood or district. Prior to this week, there was some remaining vegetation that helped screen the view from passive eyes and neighbors. Essentially, the clear cutting of vegetation has made the structure more obvious and damaging to the view and character of the neighborhood. Because of a hilltop location, the extent of the impact is much greater than just to an adjacent property. I have included a picture, a satellite view that shows not only the location of the project but also the surrounding houses, they extend beyond Dublin Road all the way to 250. It's a much larger area because it's near a hilltop. I believe that this, this action is required because of a self-inflicted process. I believe that site approval was made on notation of structure and utility purpose. The structure built was not approved. It was incumbent on the applicant with consultation of professional designers and engineers to ensure the enclosure was appropriate for in circumstances and in accordance with the code. A reference was provided to me by a neighbor. He said that on 9/8/16, a representative from Oak and Apple stated to the board, "No other construction will be outside of the identified farmstead." The farmstead is at the top of the hill. I don't have the reference, I didn't have time to check that, but you have the opportunity to review that. There is a phrase, "It is better to ask forgiveness than permission," but that's unethical. If this was intentional, I don't believe it would be appropriate to reward that behavior. Because the building violates the conservation easement, you do not have the authority to approve a variance. While you do have approval authority, while you don't have approval authority, you have the authority to deny the variance. The conservation easement can be confusing and a distraction. However, you will be essentially helping to protect the conservation easement and open space by rejecting the variance. You need not worry about the conservation easement if you do as I request. And my request is, one, have the structure removed, two, convert it to an underground hot box, and three, require a type one SEQR. I believe this request is responsible, appropriate, in accordance to codes and laws, is in the best interest in order to adequately preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood, health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have one. I'll make a statement first. Actually, we're not here to do anything except grant or deny that building. I mean, we, we can't make them have it go underground or, I'm just letting you know, okay? And so my question would be, which do you prefer? It's not a trick question, the metal box on the top or the one on the bottom in those pictures?
I don't believe the demonstration, the, the metal structure is an accurate depiction of the building necessary. So I don't believe that you or I should be making that choice. It should be a choice of not that building and a reasonably sized hot box.
Like the one, like the one you submitted, the fiberglass one?
Yes, whether, you know, something based on the equipment size.
Well, yeah, you can see the sizable equipment there, it's eight inch pipe. I mean, I was a plumber for 50 years, so that's a very reasonable piping for a, a fire hydrant, which they need the pressure and the volume in order to get it up there in case there's a fire. So you're looking at the piping that's needed. The one on the left is fire, the one on the right is water, potable water. Now, the box that you showed, I mean, is, is for only a small commercial building that has potable water and a backflow preventer. Do you think that that little box that you showed would fit over those pipings?
I would say that if this was designed differently, that a smaller box could have been used.
But you're saying underground?
Underground would be preferential.
Okay, well, again-
But the thing is, is this a commercial or industrial sized?
Yeah.
This is not supposed to be a commercial project.
Well, it's for a fire hydrant. I mean, I, I'm just letting you know from a plumber standpoint that that's the size piping you need for a fire hydrant, okay? And that's what you need in, in order to get the volume up to the, to the fire hydrant. I mean, I'm not saying it's good or bad or whatever, I'm just kind of giving from my experience, is that that's the size piping that's needed for a fire hydrant, okay? So I'm, I'm not saying that's right or wrong or-
But I'm saying that the scale of the building isn't appropriate for the neighborhood and it should not have been constructed at that size, that scale, so I understand-
The building could have been half the size and it would still be the same size fire main.
Yeah.
That's, half the size would be better than-
But, no, 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 but the fire main, that line, would have, would have still been the same size, it requires a same size building to surround it. That, that is the minimum size building that can surround that, those, those plumbing fixtures.
Where is that?
The applicant said that that was the smallest they can do by code, you know, there's certain workspace they have to have around it.
Yeah, and, and the reason is because of the high pressure to line. Again, I'm not going to go in there unless I guarantee that I can move around those eight inch lines and I start putting wrenches on them and something goes wrong, I have to have area to move, okay? I mean, in Florida, they're outside, they, they just come out of the ground and there they are because there's no freeze, but in, in, up in the east, you can't do that. But I'm just saying to you, that's the proper sized building, whether it be the metal building or the wooden building, that's needed for safety in order to work on those high pressure lines.
But it, could it have been installed underground?
Yeah.
Right.
Probably, yeah.
Which is something that should have been reviewed by the town.
It was reviewed by the town, the applicant shows that box on that approved site plan, it was, it was reviewed through the entire site plan review process. It was never to go underground.
It was never reviewed or approved as above or below ground.
This is the standard, this is the standard-
And there's no example?
Process. This is where it's done everywhere that we've dealt with RPZ backflow prevention. I, I can't think of any, any one of them that are underground in Penfield or anywhere else for that matter.
Then provision based on the open space and the conservation easement should have been made and was aware of by the applicant and the town.
It was on that plan. It was, it was originally submitted on that location, at that location, for that purpose. And it was addressed.
It was never addressed in public, as far as I know, as being above and not being below.
It may or may not have been, but we were aware of the fact that there had to be a hot box at that location from day one when they submitted their plans.
Was that reviewed by the town board in their approval of?
It was reviewed by every, every staff and board member who had involvement in the, in the process.
I've reviewed what the town board has seen, and I don't see anything on the record.
Well, it was on the record from day one, that's what they were proposing and that's what was approved.
I disagree with your statements there.
You have every right to do so.
Any other questions of this gentleman? Okay, anybody else in the audience?
Jeff Katie, 1728 Dublin Road. We've been misled, this whole thing, for the last two and a half, three years. This is just more nonsense. They're going to get whatever they want, it doesn't matter what we do here, what we say here, just like we've done at all the town board meetings, the planning board meetings and everything. Whatever they want, they're going to get, okay? I can tell by the body language, people are, get up here and speak, we're not taking seriously, just like we haven't been since the beginning of this thing. So go ahead, give them the variance, be done with it, and then when they're having their weddings and everything else up there and the tour buses, give them that too. Because you know what? You're losing people, you're losing farmers, you're losing respect.
Okay, did anybody have any questions for him? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, you want to respond to anything you've heard?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I just wanted to reiterate that the Water Authority doesn't allow us to put them in, put these, the equipment in a vault. They prefer, well, they actually require us to put it in an above-ground structure for access and maintenance purposes. So that's one of those Water Authority and Health Department requirements that we have to listen to, or that we have to work with to get our approval. And also, this is, this is the approved plan that we went through the whole process with, and the structure was identified as a proposed heated structure with the, with the domestic RPZ, the RPDA, the meter, the booster pump, and, and then we provided detailed drawings of those to the Water Authority, the Health Department, and town staff as well. And the structure was shown at the size that's constructed, so it was, it was never, I mean, the, the structure was sized to house the equipment that we needed to house within the equipment. The only change or, 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 I don't even want to call it a change, the only thing is that it's, we showed it as a heated structure, we didn't, it wasn't clarified whether it was a hot box or a, a wooden structure like we've, we constructed.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to clarify something that I don't think was brought up. At the time this was constructed, you were not aware that you needed a variance for this, is that correct?
No, we thought it was, we thought, our interpretation of the code was this, this was an accessory structure and it's under the square footage requirement that, of the 300 square foot requirement of an accessory structure and that it didn't meet, need to meet the 50-foot requirement from the front setback.
The town staff brought him in because the town staff, as Mr. Gallagher had noted, during the review process, we were under the assumption it was a hot box, and we do not require permits for hot boxes. They started construction on this site and once we found out that it was a structure, we then required him to come in to get a building permit, which they couldn't get because they didn't meet code for setback, they had to come here in order to get their building permit.
But I'm just sort of addressing that the forgiveness rather than permission.
Yeah, and I don't know what transpired to make them think they could build a structure versus a hot box. I think in his mind, he probably figured he didn't want to see a shiny box out in front of the yard, I don't know what his thinking was, but in any event, when we found out that it was not a hot box, we then required a permit and, and a variance, and that's why they're here.
Okay. And I, and I think we, we thought we were just building it per the approved plan as a heated structure and a location as shown on the approved plan, so there was just, I think, some miscommunication or misunderstanding.
So I think it was Joe that stated, that quoted you as saying that this structure as built is the, it's the minimum size that you need in order, somebody would need in order to service these pipes.
Yeah, I mean, we have requirements for, for just this-
That's what I want to ask you, what is that, what is that conclusion based on, you know, when you say-
There's, there's Health Department dimensions on both sides of it, heights off the floor in case there's a flooding issue that'll drain and it has, water has somewhere to go. Also, you have to have dimension beside it so that you can work beside it, and you also have to be so far away from walls and everything. So we use all of those things to, to come up with a structure and, and make sure, and also these valves, you see how tall they are, that's how we, we come up with the height That's how we come up with the height, because they need to be able to get them in there and build them. So, you know, you sort of use all those dimensions, and then you square off a standard structure to, to make sure you're providing all the minimum requirements and giving people room to work within there, so. And you have to keep spacing between, you know, all these, the domestic and the fire and everything, just, it's really, really for maintenance, future maintenance purposes.
Okay. And it's, as you've said, it's based on code and regulations?
Health Department, Health Department requirements.
Go ahead, Mike.
I know, I guess I'm still not clear why that building's a structure. The metal thing is a hot box. What makes, what makes that a structure?
It's a fabricated, it's a fabricated structure that comes in, you just sit it down on a concrete pad, and it's...
And the hot box isn't fabricated?
No, the hot box is. This is not, this is...
So, if they did a one-piece thing and plopped it down there, would it be okay?
We would not require a permit, we don't. We've got them all over town, we don't do that.
So, even if it looked like that, and it was one-piece and plopped in there, it would still be okay?
Right.
Okay.
It was just because they had to build it.
Well, the hot boxes are utility boxes. They're not, they're not considered to be structures per se.
Okay. A structure has a definition in code, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, let me ask you this. Why, why did you build that as opposed to just put up a hot box?
I probably should answer that one.
Come on up. I think you probably would have got it right, but you know...
The decision to build it was really aesthetic. The requirement for the box, the hot box if built, with the ceiling would be 10 feet high, the top of the building would be 10 feet high, because the top of it is a foot thick, it has insulation in it. The walls that we put on this were nine foot tall, and there's, the peak of the roof is three feet taller, so it's two feet higher than a silver box would have been. The decision to do it was totally mine. It was not Christian Crafts or anybody else's. The intent was to try and make something that was a little less glaring and more fitting to the land.
Okay, and I assume the same or similar answer for having a roof as opposed to just a square barn-like structure?
Right.
No snow is a good point, too, yeah.
Yeah, it's the, it's a three and a half, 12 pitch. I mean, it's about as low as you can go and put a shingle on it.
And you've heard some comments about the character of the area and the neighborhood. Do you think that what's, what's up there now fits more in with the character of the neighborhood than the hot box, the metal hot box, or the fiberglass hot box that somebody...
I do, yeah. I, I guess it's personal preference. Everybody's going to have their own opinion. Mine was that I thought that a wooden structure of this nature was better than a literally 16-foot by 14-foot by 10-foot-high steel box.
Okay, anything else?
I had a question about the comment made about seeker is, and I'm not sure who to direct it to, but I'm assuming that the seeker process that...
The seeker was completed for the entire project, the site plan.
For the entire project, okay.
He was, he has cracked about the pond, that pond was added because of DEC later, but it was reviewed by the town engineer, and every, the seeker process was completed for the entire project, and the parcel is actually all, all the work's done, it's stabilized, and we're actually getting ready to file our notice of termination with the DEC to close out the permit, so...
I just wanted to check that, thank you.
But yeah, seeker was completed. This seeker action, the short, the intent of the short form I submitted to the board was only for the variance for this building, for the, basically, the setback variance.
Just, just one question, going back to Kevin Gallagher's question, as it relates to this action, this action is basically a setback variance, is what it is.
Right.
So, when you in your EAF form notified, identified 4.2 acres as disturbed area, certainly 4.2 acres isn't being disturbed, why did you pick that number?
Well, that was just disturbance which I thought we had left right about now, that still was germinating in grass.
But that's not where the acreage is associated with the action.
No, but I guess...
That's for the project that was developed and approved by the planning board.
Right.
But for this particular seeker action, which is a type-two action for sheds and that type of thing in residential zones, why did you pick 4.2 acres?
It was just, just the disturbance area, that's all it was. I could have picked, I mean, I guess the variance runs with the full 28 acres, so...
I guess that's one question.
Or how do you, or how do you decide it's the whole entire 29-acre parcel that the variance is being granted for, or...
Well, I would, I would have said that the area of disturbance would have been the hot box, or this area here.
That's what I would have thought.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean...
All right, I understand.
I, I, yeah, I can, I can agree with that.
All right. Okay, anybody else in the audience care to speak about this? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, Scott Celiney, 1592 Cultural Road, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request an area variance from chapter 250, 5.1 F-12B of the code, to allow a storage building with less side setback than permitted at 1592 Cultural Road. Property is owned by Celiney Property Maintenance, and is Zoned R120, SBL number 108.16-1-8.33, application number 17Z-0065. You're on.
How are you? I'm Scott Celiney from 1592 Cultural Road, and basically, exactly what he said, I'm looking for a variance on the setback on the south side of my property to construct a storage building that's 32 wide by 48 long.
Okay. Can you, how tall is that structure going to be, that shed, or the building?
The...
Or, I guess in comparison to the existing farm market and the structures there, is it going to stand above that, be about the same height, be less?
The structure is going to match the existing building that's there.
Okay.
It may, the, I don't know what you call it, the, not the roof line, but the, it's going to be 16 feet tall.
Okay.
Wall pipe.
Right.
With the same pitch roof as the existing farm market.
As what the farm market has, the fairly shallow roofs. Okay, so it'll, it'll match, it'll be in character in terms of the design. How about the colors of that?
Same color.
Same, same colors, trim, things like that?
Steel exterior, green, and steel roof.
Sure. There's a lot of tree lines going around the site, like from the Scarborough side, the Westerly Edge. Do those tree lines obscure the view from Scarborough of where this structure would be proposed?
Yes.
Okay. How about the ones on Embry, the corner there, there's those homes, there's those two homes? Would those trees obscure the view from, of the structure as well?
There are a couple houses on Embry directly across that would...
Like the ones that are right adjacent? I think your property jumps down a little bit, and there's two homes there that are closest on the north, are, they're on the south side of Embry.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Those trees would obscure that. And now, and I think there's also some trees to the south of the farm market. Those, those will all stay?
Those will all stay.
Okay, and then they'll be, and then the, and the structure will be tucked behind those as, as shown on the plans?
Yes.
Okay. Those are the questions I have.
Any other questions from the board?
Is there going to be any lighting around the building?
Minimal, I mean, just so that nobody's messing around. I mean, it's not going to be any, you know, it's going to probably just be a, you know, typical light by the man door, and maybe one on each side of, you know, where the garage doors would be, but other than that, just to keep people from...
And this is for personal use?
Yes.
Okay, no commercial use?
No.
Okay. And, did you mention, did your neighbors say anything about it?
Yeah, and they actually... Their neighbors, they're all, they don't really know what's saying that.
Thank you. Do you want to? Thank you.
They were fine with a 25-foot setback.
Anybody else from the board? Anyone in the audience? Come on up.
My name is Randall Ubi. I live on 15, at 15 Cardigan Square. I'm about a block over from this property in question. I've lived in the area for about 35 years, and have been familiar with the properties used for the whole time as a farm market until recently. I object to the proposed use because my feeling is that this property has moved away from... First of all, I want to set the stage that my understanding is this is a residentially-zoned area. This property, because of its history of being a farm market, has been grandfathered some leeway in its use as a farm market in the past. But in recent years, it has moved decidedly away from being a farm market. It no longer seems to offer any farm market goods, as far as I can tell, hasn't for a few years. It has become the front for a very commercial and large-scale landscaping and property maintenance operation. I don't know the full size of it. He's obviously a very successful businessman, because today I counted 31 vehicles on this property when I went by. I did take pictures. I did not realize I had to bring hard copies, so I apologize, I can't easily show them. I could email them to you at the immediate end of this. But there were 31 vehicles on the property that included two large dump trucks, multiple Bobcats, pickup trucks, vehicles, not vehicles for customers, but vehicles, I assume, for his employees. There's a tremendous amount of activity on this property all the time. It has, you know, major trucks coming in, delivering mulch, delivering propane. When the Bobcats are operating, every time they back up, or when other trucks are backing up, you hear the piercing beep, 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 penetrating around the whole neighborhood. It's turning into something that it shouldn't be in a residentially-zoned area. And I'm afraid that if you grant this variance and put yet another structure on this property, that it will become very, permanently a very large-scale commercial operation property. So, you've changed the zoning of it. And even though I have respect for, he's made a great effort to try and hide much of what happens on the property by putting up hedges and fences and things like that, I fear that if the day comes when he goes to sell this property, decides it's not going to either fit him anymore, or, or he decides he's out of business, or whatever, that the next owner may not be as kind to the neighbors. And, well, first of all, he may have trouble finding a buyer, because I'm not sure who's going to buy what is a multi-building, large, commercial structure in the middle of a residential area in a way that's going to meet use that this town would sanction. So, I'm concerned that he's going to put the property into a place that is not going to find a buyer. It'll then deteriorate, and we'll be staring at a bunch of, you know, decrepit buildings that are falling apart in time. Or, he will find a buyer, and it'll be a larger commercial operation. And I think the fundamental question here is, are we turning this into commercial property when it's zoned residential and grandfathered to be a farm market? And I think the answer is it shouldn't be done.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Do you like a chance to respond to that? That's, the question he asked is a fair question about is, would granting this variance move the operation one step closer to commercial business and less of a farm market?
Well, the building's actually, I'm constructing it to put my motor home in, so it has nothing to do, that's why the length is 48 feet. So, it has nothing to do with the business. So, there's, would be no change of what's currently going on.
But it's on the business property, correct?
Yes.
Well, okay, it's, there's no doubt about that. Would you commit to putting nothing in there other than the RV? Or do you need it for anything?
I mean, I just was going to use it for any personal storage of mine. I mean...
Okay.
But what is the next owner going to use it for?
You're going to have to walk up if you're going to...
Yeah, but, and also let him finish, okay?
Yeah, I will.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean...
Well, so let me ask you this. What, you operate a business out of the location.
Right.
Do you intend to use this building for any business purpose, as opposed to personal RV and, or, et cetera?
No.
Okay, and you're fine if we were to grant this for putting that stipulation on there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Anything else you want to, you don't have to address what he said, but if, if you're good. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, sir, you want to come back up?
Well, I guess my question is, is how do you guarantee that the next owner does the same, and uses it only for personal use?
That's put in the resolution of approval if it's done. It's a variance with conditions on it. Well, you know, you shrug your shoulders, but there's a lot of things that require enforcement by town personnel.
Well, I don't think they've been enforcing it up to date, because I think we have a full-scale commercial operation with no farm market on that property now.
Yeah, you, I...
And I made my point.
No, thank, thank you. Anybody else in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, application number three, please.
Item number three, Laura Baranas, 10XL Drive, Rochester, New York, 14621. On behalf of Fantuso Family Brands, Inc., request special permits under chapter 250-1012D and chapter 250-10.13C of the code, to law, free standing sign with less front setback than permitted, and two building-mounted signs, 1661 Empire Boulevard. Property is owned by Fantuso Family Brands, Inc., and is Zoned LB, SBL number 093.19-1-23, application 17Z-0066. Laura?
Laura Baranas, representing Sam Fantuso for Empire Boulevard. First, I need to correct the monument sign situation. The new monument sign that was submitted is quite a bit smaller than what was on the original plans that were submitted to the town when they were first doing the work on the building. This one is definitely, meets a setback. I measured it yesterday. Sign's only three foot six wide. So, I took it from the edge of the road, and I took it from the strip in the road, and he's good, he's solid.
That's probably not correct, because the right-of-way is not the road itself, but quite a bit of distance in from the road. The sidewalk, the inner, the outside of the sidewalk is probably, we had this discussion earlier this evening, the outside of the sidewalk is probably right around where the property line is. State of New York owns quite a bit of area there. We can verify that, though, for you.
Yeah, he also, when I did it, also, Jim, I looked at every one of them that was in line with it down the street, and where I landed, everybody else's sign was right in the same line of his.
And I think you did a good job of reducing the size of the sign.
Yeah.
It's much smaller than it was initially, yes. Okay.
But it, it looks pretty good to me. I mean, standing there, too, with the measurements, and then standing in, right in line with every other one that was down the road.
You don't have much room to work with there with the green space you have.
No, but I don't have a large sign either, you know? And another thing, too, I wasn't sure exactly how you're figuring the square footage on it. I know some towns don't figure the base, so I wasn't sure if you're figuring the top portion of the sign and not the base.
Could you put a picture up on the floor for the, for everybody to see, for the public to see?
So, if you're figuring just this area, that's just a little over 12 square foot.
How, how much would it be of the total area, just out of curiosity?
If you go from the top to the bottom, you're at, I think, 20, 21 square feet. Small.
I guess I'd have to defer to our code compliance officer, who we're lucky enough to have with us this evening, to see how he interprets the sign issue. Can you come up?
Usually, it pays to hang out in the back of the room.
Got to get your name and address, too, Andy.
Andy Sevegas, 170 Lysander Drive. I think that we would, for the purposes of calculating the area of this sign, we would, we would not include the base portion, just the upper area above the red stripe.
So, it would be a little over 12 square foot. And you got to have the base, because we're in Rochester, and it's snow, so...
Well, you're entitled to have a base just to get the sign above ground, but also, you've got your address on it, and we don't include site, addresses in signage, that's just identification purpose.
Oh, you don't, exactly. But you do want the addresses on the sign.
The address is not part of the sign.
Yeah.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Andy.
So then we go to the signs on the building, which...
But let me interrupt you for a second.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm confused as to whether the current location would violate the setback requirement. I thought I heard you say you don't think it does it anymore, and I thought I heard Kaz say I don't necessarily agree with you. So I mean, we're... I don't want to consider something, this board, to deliberate something that we don't have to. If you're in compliance, great.
I believe we are.
All right. Well, then, probably on that issue, I would say you don't want to put it up there and then find out afterwards you're not.
No, and I could be, Jim, down there, too, if he wants to check the measurements. I don't have an issue with that.
Good idea, but that would probably require us to table this, to verify that. I guess the other option would be to assume that you need a setback and then make your argument regarding that. And then we can decide. Again, I don't...
Yeah, but then we'd still have to table it.
Yeah.
I think I'm good, and I... Because I did measure, and also because I'm saying that I stood right at the measurement that I get.
And you looked down the road, and you saw that.
I was in line with every other sign.
They could all have permission to violate the setback. I don't know.
Here's the... Andy, can I just ask?
Yeah, but let him talk. I'm just going to show you.
From the side? I thought you said one is yours, the edge of the road, just so they'd know.
No, it's your buck setback.
This one?
So you're certainly not going to... I don't think it's 20 feet.
That doesn't look like this.
Should be in line with everybody else.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's what the board's looking for you to do, but the board needs to know where you're visiting.
Okay. Well, he's saying it's from the sidewalk, so it's a possibility that everybody down the road got a setback request?
They probably did.
Okay.
So if, given the fact that he, an official at the town, says you start your measurement at the sidewalk...
Yes.
Do you think you need a setback variance?
Yes.
Okay. Then go ahead and make your argument on that request.
Okay. Well, if we go too much farther, and we're sitting in the middle of the parking lot, so we need to be in the grass area, and from the road to where I measured, from the edge of the road, we're over 20-some feet. So...
Yeah.
And I also believe that everybody else is at the same setback that I'm asking for, because I felt pretty confident when I measured, after looking at everybody's other signs on the road, they were all in the same spot I was looking to start the leading edge of our sign-in.
Okay, so you're not going to, like, stick out like a sore thumb, so to speak?
Not at all.
Just the opposite. You're going to be lined up consistent with everybody else. How about, in the location that you're proposing, do you see any issues with site distance or site problems from vehicles pulling out from the side street?
No, no. It's bad far enough that... And that's always been a concern of mine, too, with them being too close to the road. But this is setting back close, very close inside the parking lot, so it's in a good spot.
Okay. So before you go to the building-mounted sign, since we're on the topic, anybody else have any questions about the monument sign?
Yeah, I just have one. Okay, you changed the grass from this sign application, correct?
I didn't.
Well, how about it's not the way it looks?
Yeah, I think that was originally the... What was submitted to the town when they were first planning everything.
Okay. Now, this is what it looks like now, right?
Yes.
Okay, with all pavement. And you show your sign in the grass. Are you saying your sign will go in this grassy area?
Yes.
Okay. And it will still be the proper distance from the road?
Well...
No, we need a variance.
With a variance.
With a variance, with the 20-foot setback, and with the setback that everybody else is at right now. Yes.
Okay. But it will go in a grassy area, not on pavement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was my only question on that.
Any other board questions on the monument sign?
No.
Okay. Go ahead to the building mounted.
Okay. The building sign, we're asking for two, and we're not, you know, we're not putting them on the front, we're putting them on the sides of the building. They're pretty inconspicuous. They're recessed, they're not illuminated, and they're only 12 square feet. So the total for the two of them, you're only looking at 24 square feet.
Have they gone yet?
No.
You can't... I'm sorry, but you can't interrupt. If you want to speak, you're more than welcome to, but we do have a process, so go ahead.
They're non-illuminated. They're just aluminum, 090 aluminum painted with white acrylic letters on it. So it's, you know, it's not jumping out at anybody, but it's demure enough that it looks good, and you can see it coming up the side and in the road. And it kind of was originally started with the design of the building, which he kind of worked with the town when he was first doing it, and he kind of felt guided in this direction, but I don't think that it's asking for over the top, you know? Because they are small signs.
Why do you need two? I'm a little bit curious. You say they're inconspicuous.
Well, it was the way the building was designed. If you look at that white frame there, that's not the sign. That's actually on the building right now. And it's a recess. It almost... It was designed that way, because he planned on putting the signs there. So you have one on each side that's just kind of like a... It's painted white right now with a white frame around it.
No, I get it, but I guess I'm asking why? The code says you can have one. You're asking for two, which you're entitled to ask.
Yes.
My question is, why do you need two?
Well...
What's the purpose of the second one?
I don't think when he started this whole venture with the town and the building and everything, that he knew he couldn't have two. He's a very symmetrical person. He... You have to have two of the same thing you're looking at, and if it's off a little bit, it'll make him crazy, and he'll make me crazy. So that's probably another reason when they were doing the designing. They just said, if you're going to put it on one side, you've got to put it on the other. So I think he worked with Harold in the beginning on some of this, and I think he just felt that this was the way he was kind of being guided in a way, and...
Okay, so let me ask you this. The... Which direction will each sign be facing?
West and east.
Okay, so opposite directions. Is there any thought that you need two signs to make the business or/or the building more visible to people driving on Empire Boulevard? We hear that a lot. We need two signs because of the road, and people need to know where our location is. I'm just trying to ascertain, other than the applicant's desire to be symmetrical and have two, understandable, but I don't know if it's enough to justify a variance. But if there is a need to identify the building, which, as I've said, we've heard that a lot, and we've heard it a lot on Empire Boulevard.
Yes.
You know, okay, but you do have a monument sign application as well. So, you know, a monument sign and a second one on the building? I'm just trying to understand, as I've said three times now, the need for two when the code allows one.
Yeah. I just... I don't understand why in the beginning, when everything was submitted to the town, the plans for the building and everything, this was all put in. Everybody reviewed it. Nobody ever said anything at the time that he couldn't have it. And then when he called me to start the signs for him, he said, "Yeah, when the town did everything, they approved the signs." And then when I came down to see Jim, Jim says, "No, these aren't approved."
Well, Laura, everybody has to submit something to the community to review.
Right.
When you submit it, it doesn't necessarily mean it's automatically going to be approved. It means that it has to be reviewed. He went to the planning board, and that got taken care of.
Right.
And then the last part of that was the sign package, which was submitted initially with the planning application, not an application for a special permit for signs. So when we saw the fact that he did want to, and he came to us, and we've been working a lot with him lately, when he indicated that he did want those two signs, I said, "You've got to come to the board to get an approval for those. You can't just put them up."
But I don't think he initially knew that, and the building was kind of designed around putting one on each side. That's why the, you know, it looks like a window. It's actually like a picture frame, but that's what his intentions were from the beginning once they started with everything, and nobody ever said anything to him at the time, "Oh, you can't have this," or whatever. So he just assumed it was okay. The same thing with the monument sign.
As you and I know, he is entitled to much more signage than what he's proposing, based on the frontage of his building.
Yes.
Is there a reason why it wouldn't be more advantageous to have a larger sign, one sign on the front of the building identifying the company versus two smaller signs that you might not be able to see if you're coming down the street?
There's not really a place on the front of the building for it. There isn't. We looked at putting a sign on the front of the building. We just didn't think it would, you know, go well. And not just that, I mean, he's done so much to that house. That house is literally beautiful. It really is.
Okay. I don't think anyone's disputing that.
Yeah.
But I don't know that it's germane to the application either.
No, it's not germane, but, you know, when you go back to it again, they are built already with the intention of having the signs in there, and as, you know, I mentioned before, they are only 12 square feet. So if you count both of them together, you're only looking at 24 square feet for the two of them on the building.
All right, so let me ask you this. Are you aware, and Jim, if you want to chime in, feel free as well, are you aware of any other buildings, commercial buildings in that area that have two building-mounted signs and a freestanding sign? And...
Can I come up?
Your client's raising his hand. That's fine. And tell me, if the answer is yes, and here they are, tell me why those applications are similar to yours. Right? Because we do like to be consistent, and if we have granted similar requests before for similar reasons, you should point that out to us, because, as I said, we do like to be consistent, so...
The Dollar Tree is the first one. Huge, huge size, plus a sign in front, a brown sign in front.
All right.
He had the list of the other ones?
Yeah, I got the list right in my head.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just, you know, the bottom line is that...
Yeah, let him go.
My name is Sam Fantuso. I live in Penfield at 26 Thomas Maria Circle. When we started this project, the idea was to keep the look of the old farmhouse in the front, keep the windows similar, kind of keep the character of the house, and try to make the signs look like windows on the side, so they wouldn't protrude and look like a commercial building. That was the original intent. From almost day two of this process, I had someone create a 3D drawing of what this project was going to look like. Never once did someone say, "Don't put the awning there. You should get one sign. There's only one sign permitted." I live in Penfield. There's a Snoco across the street from me, probably realistically has 10 signs with the brand Snoco. The Dollar Tree that went up during this process has two 490-type billboards on both sides with two exit and entrance signs that are larger than our two little signs. Pizza Hut just moved into Plaza with absolutely no reason to have two signs on it, because you can't see them from the street anyway, but it has two signs. And Chili's that just opened. I know maybe a pregnant-looking chili doesn't consider it being a sign, but they have a giant chili on the side of the building, which is a sign, a sign in the front, a sign in the back. And these are like large commercial signs. This is like, is simple and low-key as possible to fit the neighborhood that's kind of behind us also, and I wasn't trying to do something extremely commercial. But what's concerning me right now is that from day one, these were on a 3D drawing, and no one said, "Hey, yeah, you've got to put your permits in, you've got to..." And I get that. No one said, "By the way, you should look at this. You can't have two signs in there." And being a resident, I think Murphy's, I think, has two signs that went up during the same process. I could go all day long. I mean, some of my other competitors have two signs at the corner, you know, 441 and 250 or 5-Mile Line, two giant signs. Not that neck and powder. The Mark's Pizzeria situation has two giant signs there. I just... This is like as low-key as you could possibly get with 12 square feet. This is like almost an A-frame sign, less than... It's about the size of an A-frame sign that businesses have all over Penfield in the front of their stores.
All right. Sam, let me ask you this. Why do you need, not want, why do you need two signs?
Because when you're coming from the bay, down the Bay Hill, coming up, you see the side of the house. It's the thing you see. And when you're coming from Bay Road, coming up the street, whatever direction that is, that's the side of size you see.
Okay, but the freestanding sign won't take care of that for you?
It takes care of the main traffic flow.
It takes care of the main traffic flow, and it's lit at night, so, I mean... And, you know, quite honestly, the issue right now is that that's hardcore siding already built in. I'd have to rip all this siding down on the side of the house to redo all that. You know, right now, if we had a choice, if you're saying, "Hey, I'm going to give you a choice," I would do the two signs on the building and forget the monument sign, only because it would... What am I going to have, these two-looking windows that don't have windows in them on the side of the house and nothing in them? It would look ridiculous, after all the time I've heard engineers, designers, and everybody else has been involved with this project since day one.
Sam, so you're saying that if you're driving past your building, either from the north or the south, if you were to do a sign on the front of the building, you wouldn't see the building until you got almost directly in front of the building?
Yeah, you'd pass it.
And you'd pass it.
You'd pass it. You know, it's fast traffic, you'd pass it. You wouldn't see it.
Please, it's easy, so...
I mean, but, you know, why does, you know, why does Dollar Tree need two billboard signs and...
Because Dollar Tree's not on a corner like you are, and it was blocked from Bay, almost completely, the traffic going on Bay, which is a more major intersection than, what do you got, Rossman? That's why. We've, in general, we've given two building-mounted signs without a monument sign. It seems to me that those two signs serve the same purpose as your monument sign, basically. It's redundant.
But they don't light, they don't illuminate, so when it starts getting darker, you won't see them.
Yeah, but I'm not... Exactly why you don't need them there.
Well, you need them during the day. I've been out there, I don't know how many times. I drive by it every time I go out there. I have to turn around.
This is not a retail location.
No.
It's corporate offices. They're facing in the same direction, basically north and south, or east and west.
Well, separate sides of the building.
And the monument sign's facing the same way as each of those. So it... And it's out front, so it's accomplishing the same purpose.
Well, your same theory with the Dollar Tree is very similar to this house. If you turn right or left on Plank, I mean, you would see the giant side of the house, and that's what you see. You don't really see the front of the house. So when you're coming up Bay and you're stopping at the light at Plank in front of the bank, it's the same thing. It's just you would see the side of the house more before you would see the front of the house. The way the house is kind of angled, that's what you would see, and the way the sign would be angled. Again, I don't know. I just... I just think, like, a lot of this could have been prevented from day one. Before we put the sign down, if somebody would just pointed the finger and said, "Hey..."
Sam, and I don't want to be disrespectful, but isn't that what your architect and your engineer should be doing? engineer should be doing? They should be familiar with the ordinances of the town of Penfield. That's what you're paying them to do.
Yeah, I guess, but again, I think if they drive around Penfield, have been around Penfield, it's almost the norm to have two signs on a lot of the commercial buildings.
So, Sam, if the two building-mounted request is denied, what could you or what would you do with the space on the building?
I would have giant white boxes that would look ridiculous. I'd rather eliminate the monument sign if I had that choice.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other board questions?
Got a question. Okay. What are the two little pizza slices on your awning? Those are really considered signs.
Well, that's a branding, and every, every one of the saboteurs is going to be happy to have that on their awning. It's nothing you see from the street or anything, it's when you walk underneath it, and that's when you notice it. But it's part of the architectural metal of the awning.
Kind of like the Big Pepper.
Yeah, well, I know what you're saying, but there's still signs on the awning. I mean, we...
Well, it's not really a sign.
We don't allow Applebee's to have apples on their...
Well, is that...
Yeah, you've been working with me for a long, long time, and you know our code just as well as I do. Any form of advertising, whatever it may be, is considered to be a sign.
You guys been to Delta Sonic lately?
I understand. I'm just telling you what the code, and it's not that you can't ask for it, but you've got to know that that is a sign if there's something on the...
I mean, I always knew if you had to put, if you put graphics on the front of the sign, then it was, or awning, it was considered a sign, but these were just part of this branding that goes into the frame of the sign that, of the awning that we didn't think there would be an issue with.
I didn't recognize that on the awning.
Here, you want to see the picture?
Yeah, could I?
Yeah, sure. Send them down. It's, and I don't mean to be contentious, but I don't know that many people that build a frame with a pizzas piece in it.
I just think that's, that's an issue that staff is going to have to take up with them.
Well, I mean, it goes to if they want them, then you're asking for four building signs. That's my point.
That's not, that's not a sign, it's the brand of the awning. So just like, you know, side of my glasses here, that's the brand, that's the brand.
Yeah, but there's a definition of sign in the code, and I, I don't know, but my guess is it probably fits within that definition. Okay, go ahead, Murray.
We, just, I'm sorry, before you do, we've put these awnings in several towns. It's never even an issue, not even a concern. It's all of like seven or eight inches by seven inches, and it's welded onto the sign like the brand of the awning. That's the brand that we sell our stores.
Sam, that seems to be the same assume, okay, that you took for the signs. I mean, assume is a word that you really got to be careful with. I mean, you got to find out what the code is, rather than assume what the code is or what you can do. Okay? I'm not being mean, I'm just, I've heard you use the word assume three times.
I gotta stop using the word assume. I just think that I pull into a lot of businesses, including Delta Sonic on a daily basis, and there's signs, there's probably 50 signs with the Delta Sonic logo on every pump, on every window, on every door. You could go to any of the other chains throughout that, the Penfield area, the national chains. There's every sign they have. There's a McDonald's logo on everything they do, from the windows to the A-frames to the menu board. You going to count all those too now? I mean, I think there should be a definition of a size of something considered to be a sign. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You're getting heated here, I won't.
It's okay. I actually wanted to switch the topic back to the, to the signs, the mounted signs. You had mentioned, I think, that they weren't lit, but I do see lights on the drawings.
Yeah, they're not backlit sign or light-up signs. There's two similar, if you look at the front of the house, the same kind of signs are on the front of the house.
But they will be lit then, they just wouldn't be backlit.
Right.
But they are lit, so you could see them.
Yeah, that's not going to light those signs. That's going to shoot down, it's not going to shoot on the sign.
60 watt bulbs that just...
If he was putting the typical type of gooseneck light over the top of it, it would light. That's not going to light those.
So if you were not to have a monument sign and had those two signs, would you want it lit?
No.
Okay.
I think it would kill the look of the house.
Okay.
Plus the letters are, would be probably a little too small for us to light anyways. It's just really, they're very small signs, and we're just asking, just to consider doing it, only because the reason he intentionally built those was because he thought he could have two signs. And I know you're saying that he should have chapped in, he probably should have, but he didn't. And he felt, probably because when they went through the planning board and everything else, when they were originally doing the building, that everybody looked at it, nobody said anything. And I swear to God, when I walked out there, he told me everything's approved. He thought it was, because it had gone through the town, so.
Yeah.
That's when I called Jim, and Jim said, "No, these aren't approved."
Yeah, and I think, you know, I talked to Joe about that a little bit today, is, you know, I think the process, going from counter to counter to counter, and all of a sudden you're on to the next thing, like the parking lot, the, again, I can't use the word assume. It's almost like, okay, you're done with this part of it, now go to the next part of it. And this has been quite an experience.
Well, you know, you're right. You did talk to me, and I followed up, okay, and I talked to Zach, and you talked about, well, this, this happened and that happened, and there was trucks out there with lights on them, measuring everything. But you failed to say that the original drawing that you did with the grass in the front, because your plowman said, gee, that's a, there's no place to put the snow, is that you eliminated the grass in the front, put it in the back, assuming that that was fine. When you were told, and, or you should have known, or your engineer, somebody should have known, when you put a drawing in, you can't change it just because your driveway guy don't like it, or he tells you something, you go, gee, that sounds good. You had to just ask first. You have to submit it to the boards. So everything that you, and then, when it's not the way to drawing is, the board, the people that work for us, the, you know, the guys that go out and check things, have to go out and check it. And if I looked at your blueprint and then drove by your place and went, "That ain't even close to what you gave us," I would certainly have two or three trucks measuring and finding out what happened. Sam, you've kind of shot yourself in the foot a lot of times. I know you say the, the way we do things are bad, but the reason you went...
I didn't say they're bad. I didn't say they're bad.
The reason you went from one desk up there to the other desk should make you realize, one is the planning board, one is the zoning board. So if the planning board says you have to go see the zoning board, well, then there must be something that you have to get approved by the zoning board, like signs. See, this is the problem. I'm not accusing you, I'm not saying you did anything intentionally wrong, but this whole process, you've kind of, kind of, you know, I mean, I remember doing this three months ago.
I know you guys do this every day.
Yeah.
No, no.
I don't do this every day, but I've done it a lot of times, in a lot of different towns, and several times recently in City Rochester. It wasn't like what's going on right now.
Yeah.
It wasn't like this.
So let me, let me say a couple things, Sam. First of all, by and large, your project's been approved.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
And you're going to move forward with it, and you're hoping it's going to be a big success, as are we. So some people might look at this entire project and say, no, these things are sort of relatively speaking, small things. And if they're not granted, well, jeez, he should be happy because he got 95 or 96% of what he was asking for. Some people may say that. That's one. And two is, we, the zoning board, just like staff, just like planning board, just like town board, we do have an obligation to maintain the code, and to protect the interest of everybody that lives in the town, works in the town, owns property in the town. None of this is intended to be personal on any night. I hope it's not, because it shouldn't be.
It does feel that way. It does feel that way.
And I'm kidding, and you're not, you're not the first person to say that.
But while this project's going on, when there's four new businesses that open up that have more than two signs...
Right.
And you guys are making like, you know, like this is a crime scene or something.
Well, recall that we asked the question just about a half an hour ago, are there any other locations in that area that have two and one? We asked it, and we asked it for a reason. And you heard me say that we like to be consistent. So it's not as if we're not going to consider other properties in the location that have that. But again, we have to determine whether those locations are similar, and the reasons for allowing three signs in location one are similar to location two. And I'm not saying yes or no at this point, but I'm just saying, we're obligated to do our work, and what may seem like simple issues, most of the people in Zoom are probably saying, "I wish they would all shut the heck up and move on to the next application. It's a sign for God's sakes." Or, "Well, you're entitled, then we're entitled too." So I just, we should all keep in mind that everybody here thinks this is a good project, as does planning board, as does the town staff, because it's been granted. By and large, it's been granted. So I understand your frustration, and I hear it, but we, and everybody in this building has a job to do. So I, I don't, that's not, we shouldn't lose sight of that fact. But I get where you're coming from. Okay, enough preaching by me. Anybody else on the board? Anybody in the audience care to speak about this? Okay.
I think she wanted to speak about 10 minutes ago, right?
Yes.
She actually did at one point.
You got that right. Well, for Rossman Drive.
What's your first name?
Her name's Kelly. I'm Judy, I'm representing her.
Okay, very good.
And she's my daughter.
Okay.
I'm not spoken. So Kelly lives kitty, right across the street from them. Their back, their, their people coming out of their back driveway is going to be right in front of her driveway. And my question is, if they have that sign, and the snow, you know, gets up around it, their plowman, they're not going to be able to get the snow away from there. And it's hard enough to see coming out of Rossman to try to turn either right or left. And I don't think he needs more than three signs either, two signs either.
Okay. You want to address that? If it gets covered by, with snow, what are you going to do about it? You don't have to.
It's set back far enough that when you're pulling out of anywhere, you've got great clearance from the street, so you've never, it would never be an issue of being in the way.
Where is it in relation to where a reasonable driver would stop before turning onto Empire?
Oh, it's set back farther than that, because I stood there, and it's, the sidewalk is up there, and then it's back here in the grass, almost right into where the parking lot is. So you're up, it may be the crosswalk, way ahead of that sign before U-turn. It's not in the way at all.
Okay. Any other board questions? You look like you want to say something, Mike.
I'm just, I don't want to keep beating this down, but one thing I want to reiterate, this, to start with, you don't have a retail operation there. The things you're talking about are retail, okay? Including Delta Sonic and the Dollar Tree. If you want to talk about consistency, we had an application three, three years ago, four years ago, on 250 for Cornerstone. They had a building, it had a peak, it had two spots for a sign, and they said, you know, it was designed so there's signs both ways. And we said, fine, but then, you know, are you willing to give up your freestanding sign? And they said, yeah. And, you know, we approved it, they put their two signs up. So I mean, the fact that the building's designed a certain way is not, it's a factor, but not a great factor.
It is a factor, though.
Yeah, if you're going for commercial, like, you're going for residential, commercial. So, I mean, commercial's commercial. It doesn't, I don't see how you could justify if it's a Dollar Tree or an office. I want to drive attention to that building if I'm meeting someone or someone's driving by.
Sure, but you're not going to have the same number of people visiting that location as visiting one of your retail operations.
No, but he's not set up for that either. I mean, he doesn't have a parking lot for that.
Yeah, my retail operation, they have a lot bigger signs than that.
But he's still a business, just as much as they are a business down the street, so...
But that location isn't seeing retail customers, aren't coming and going nonstop.
Anybody else in the audience? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a number four, Kellis Sabata, 70, I'm sorry, I got that, I don't know if I got it right or wrong, but I apologize if I didn't. 70 Stable Gate Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. Request a conditional use permit under Article, under Chapter 250-5.61A, and an area variance from Chapter 255.6D3. Special permit under Chapter 250-10.13C of the Code to allow a sit-down restaurant with outdoor dining, a walk-in cooler with less rear setback than permitted, and two wall-mounted signs at 2487 Broncroft Boulevard. Property is owned by Noco Express Properties LLC and its own limited business. SPL number 123.07-1-42. Application number 17Z-0067.
Just hold on one second, I just have to get some more water. Feel free to tell us what you want to say.
Well, thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
We got one person left who's probably not back there. It could be that guy.
Okay, my name is Carmelo M. Calaschibetta, with Camps Pizzeria, headquartered in 900 Jefferson Road, Henrietta. And tonight, I'm here to just ask for a few variances on the opportunity to open a new pizzeria location at 2487 Broncroft Boulevard. Just want to offer some light seating inside the store and a little bit outside the store, and we would want to have a concrete slab about 10 by 10 in size for just that outdoor seating, and then we would, another outdoor slab for, of concrete for the, a walk-in cooler I'd like to have outside the building in order to make a more spacious kitchen and dining area inside there. Also, for those two signs, I just want to be able to use the two existing fixtures that are on the building and on the pole that was previously used for the mart and the gas station Valero at the moment. That's pretty much it.
Just for the record, can you talk a little bit about what the setback is for the walk-in cooler?
That's right, that's right. The setback is supposed to be 30, 30 feet from the rear, but we're asking for a give or take about 23 feet or so. I mean, the corner of the building is already about 24 feet away from this, from there, and that's what's already existing, so I don't think it would be too demanding to setback for our cooler there.
So you're asking for a 6.33 foot rear setback variance?
Give or take, yes.
Okay. And there's no place else you can put that cooler on the property?
Well, I think it would be most, okay, it's the least amount of glaring view if it was put behind the building there versus on the side or somewhere else, because it's, you know, it's been a vacant building for a couple years, and I just want to kind of make the area a little nicer, and putting something in there, if I put the cooler on the other side of the building, it would still be visible. Here is, at least, would be covered by an existing wall in the back. If you can see right here, you'd be pretty much missing most of it there. If necessary, you know, if you guys needed me to paint the cooler or whatever, just to make it nicer, but I think that would be the most ideal for the surrounding area.
How big would this be, the structure itself?
So we'd have the slab underneath, I think we mentioned like a nine by nine concrete slab, something like that. Eight by seven, I can't remember exactly, but then the cooler would be six by six on top.
He hasn't mentioned to you the fact that we did try to obviate the need for the variance. He was going to try and install it inside the building. Unfortunately, he needed, under state code, to have two bathrooms instead of one, and he couldn't use that area for the second bathroom inside, so he had to go outside.
So he was kind of forced to put it somewhere else because of these separate men's and ladies' rooms, right?
We did look at other alternatives for its location, because I did try to figure out a way to try and mitigate the variance. Problem that he has is if he goes on the west side of the building, that is where the outside dining area is proposed to be, so that takes that area out. If he puts it on the east side, he's taking a parking space, and it's kind of visible from Blossom Road, which we don't want either, so it's kind of limited as to where he is on the side.
Okay.
Is there, and the depth of this cooler, six by six?
Yes.
Front, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the depth?
Six? Six.
Six by six by six?
Yep, it's a cube.
Okay. Are you going to have any buffering on the east side? If you're coming down Blossom, are you going to be able to see it to the left?
I don't think you'd be able to see it, as I explained, with the wall, the existing wall is already there. It'd be, I would say, for the most part covered, maybe you'd see the top of it at the most.
Okay, and what about noise?
Uh, it'd be a brand-new unit, so they tend to operate, I mean, the newer ones are pretty, pretty forgiving on sound. I don't think it would cause any negative externalities.
I mean, you have a neighbor on that side, right, a residence?
I think so.
Have you talked to them at all about this?
No, sir.
Have you heard, and you haven't heard from them, I take it?
I haven't heard from anyone.
Yep, there he is.
I guess he's going to speak, so, maybe not, but I assume that's why you're here.
Okay.
Okay. That's the walk-in cooler. And even if you put it on the far side, on the far east, you still would need a variance?
I believe so, yes.
And I think you got some kind of electrical service coming in there too, right? So that kind of precludes it. Tell me a little bit about the business. How many employees?
At any given time, you'd usually have like a minimum of two employees, one person making pizzas and whatnot, and one person ready to deliver. But on a busy Friday night, we might have eight or so.
Okay. Hours of operation?
Be pretty standard, probably 10:00 AM to latest at 12:00 AM, but most likely be closing around 10:00.
Is that seven days?
Sunday, we'd probably open a little later and close a little earlier.
Okay. Are you changing anything as far as exterior lighting?
Wouldn't be changing anything, probably just upgrading the fixtures underneath the existing awning, I think it's a.
Okay. And what about control of odors?
If you call it smell of pizza, an odor, you know-
Well, it's an odor, it's a question of whether it's a good odor or a bad odor.
We have good exhaust systems, you know, I've never had any issues with our other locations. I mean, like I said, it's the smell of pizza.
Yeah, where is it, and where are you exhausting, to where? What direction? Have you identified on the site, on the building yet where you want to install this exhaust system?
Not, it would probably come out of the roof, I would assume.
Straight up?
Yeah, probably smart there.
Okay. Okay, and parking, you have enough spaces, correct?
Compared to our other locations, especially the other one in Penfield, I'd say it's at least proportionate, if not the same amount of spaces in that building is, that we also have is bigger, and I say we are totally fine in terms of spaces.
So the outdoor dining you're talking about-
Mm-hmm.
-how many, how many tables are you going to have out there?
Maybe two, yeah.
And you're going to have, would people take the pizza out there, or are you going to have somebody taking orders out there and go-
No, people would just order pizza, pick it up. If they wanted to eat it up, they can more than welcome bringing it out there.
And obviously, this would be in the warmer months.
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to have any music?
In the store, yes.
But not externally?
No, no, I don't plan on that.
Do you have any railings or anything in that area, or just have a slab, an open slab?
Just an open slab, yeah. Would that be required?
No, not necessarily.
It might look nicer if I put them there, so, I might plan on that, yes.
All right. So some type of railing there?
Maybe.
Maybe. Signs, we have the same basic issue. You got a, you want a monument sign or-
I just want to use the existing fixtures that are there. So there's one on the eastern side of the building, and then there's just a standalone, like a pole, like a gas station sign pole.
So you don't want two building-mounted signs?
I mean, no.
Okay.
You did apply for that.
I did?
Yeah.
Did Valerio get to? If I could get it, that'd be great.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, we would be a retail location in this example, so.
You're right, but you also have a business that's been there, a number of different businesses, that haven't, had to utilize two signs. Of course, they're no longer there, so.
Exactly.
But I think we'd have the same problem that we have typically with granting two signs for two buildings. You've got a relatively small building there, so, you know, but are you still requi, are you going to withdraw the request, or are you going to?
No, it's not, you know, let's, you know-
You'll go for it.
Go for it, right?
Illumination of the signs, internal?
LED internal, yeah.
Okay, on both the buildings-
Yes.
-and the free standing. Okay, that's all I have.
Any questions from the board?
I'm sorry.
Well, I have some.
Or staff.
So I just want to make clear what sides of the building you would request for the signs. Let's call them Blossom Road side and Broncroft Boulevard side.
This is my father.
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Carmelo Calasabata, Stable Gate Drive, Penfield. As you know, the awning was just recently taken down, it was out there originally last week, a few days ago, actually. We're hoping that because the awning's down now, which in essence should carry the colors of the previous tenant there, as well as the main building, that we can also put another sign on the facade, the main side of the building that faces Atlantic, a sign to replace the awning that was already there.
Okay, so one-
As a theory.
So one building-mounted sign facing Atlantic or Broncroft, or whatever it's called at that point, where would the second, on which side would the second one go?
There's already an existing box sign there, but we wouldn't use it as a box sign, we'd just make it an LED sign where it is now, on the Blossom side.
Blossom Road sign, okay, that's-
There's not a monument, but a pole sign, you know, right there in the corner, which, being a corner property, you know.
If you had to choose two out of the three, what would you do?
All three.
See, none of the above.
You know, in defense of, you know, Sam earlier, you know, we are competitors, we're friends as well, I mean, we're both businessmen. You know, the biggest part, problem that businesses have, and I have this main issue myself in Penfield, at our Penfield location, on the next door to McDonald's and next door to the restaurant there, we have one little sign on that huge building with two redwoods blocking my view, okay, in front of McDonald's, and we have no visibility there at all.
That may be a reason for another sign.
I'm just saying, when we initially tried doing that, we were told we couldn't, that's why there is no other sign. But that's another story. The point being is, the sign is a major issue for any business, as you know. And being that, you know, that location that we're trying to get into now, it's been an eyesore, even when it was open, and with all due respect to the previous owners tenants, but we wanted to make it look up, we want to brighten that whole corner up, if you will. And I think, you know, putting a small LED sign similar to the one we have in our Penfield location on the front and one on the side there, I think would be a, won't be a bad request.
Yeah, anybody else on the board? Nope. Anyone in the audience? Come on up, sir.
Hi, my name's Walt Mon, I live right behind 1789 Blossom, and I'm quite concerned with the restaurant going in there. I mean, I'm used to the commercial stuff in the neighborhood, it's been, you know, that forever. My concerns with the restaurant are, I put in commercial kitchens, so I know that there's noise, smell, garbage issues, you know, the dumpsters, I don't care, you empty the dumpster three times a day, still got raccoons, still got rats coming up from the park and across the street. You can see that from going across the street to the other restaurant any night, you walk behind there, chase the raccoons off the dumpsters, and I know the smell of pizza, I love pizza, you can tell, I eat a lot of pizza, I just don't want to smell it seven days a week. As it is now with the restaurant across the street, you know, every morning I walk out of my house and I'm bombarded with greasy bacon and egg smells. I really don't want, and I don't know if you're going to do what your menu is, you're going to have wings or subs, and so it's not just a pizza smell, there's a grease issue. You're going to have two fans on the roof, you're going to have an exhaust fan, and I believe the town of Penfield requires supply air to come back in, plus the new condensing unit for the walk-in, and that's right in my side yard, so, those are my concerns.
And they're all valid concerns, and we hear it from a lot of restaurants, I've had to deal with them a lot over the years.
Right. And a few years ago, we tried, someone was going to go into the house next to me with a restaurant-
Right, I remember that one.
-and, you know, I had the same issues then as I do now, so.
One of the issues is, it's a conditionally permitted use. In essence, it's a permitted use with conditions placed upon it to ensure that a neighbor does not get adversely impacted by the use. And it is our responsibility as a town to do code enforcement to ensure that their systems don't create adverse impacts to with noise, lighting, garbage, garbage pickup, which is a big issue for me right now, what time it comes in the morning, we've had a lot of early morning pickups-
Comes at 4:30 across the street, I can tell you.
Yeah, and I think the town's working on that right now, because we're going to have to make sure that residences aren't impacted by commercial falling pickup, so. All these issues have to be addressed, they have to do, you know, and I think we've gotten to the point where a lot of them are in really good shape. We haven't had a lot of complaints about restaurants, other than occasional dumpster issues, and we've got to keep a handle on that. We do require them to have dumpster enclosures, they are already geared up to do that for us, and they'll have to work with their ref and solidarity to ensure that they do not impact you prior to 7:00 AM in the morning, so. It's a difficult thing because it is, it's a permitted use with places with conditions upon it. It's a hard thing to deal with, but the other side of that, too, is, it's been vacant a long time, it's an eyesore of the neighborhood, and it has to be addressed.
Right. And I understand, and I don't have an issue, I mean, with that, I just, I'm concerned with the restaurant, because it brings-
Understand.
-a lot of bad side effects. I'm used to the lighting and the noise from the convenience store and the garbage in my front yard and all that. I just, you know, I don't need the smells and the rodents and the noise from, you know, the fans and the compressors, so.
Well, they're subject to town requirements, they're also subject to a variety of health department requirements, and the health department does spend a lot of time in Penfield just making sure that things are going the way they're supposed to. I think we have a pretty good track record. Every so often, you get a violation here or there, but it's resolved through equipment.
Okay. What, I got a question for you. Would the walk-in cooler be buffered with the existing fence that's there, or would you be able to see that?
I mean, the fence is only, what, six foot high, something like that.
That's supposedly what the walk-in cooler's-
Well, yeah, but then the condensing unit's up on top of that, so, and, you know, the cooler, I don't mean, not for anything, but if you're only getting a six-foot walk-in, I mean, I've never seen a six-foot high walk-in, they're usually at least seven and a half feet, that's the standard size, so.
Well, it's a good point that you bring up, though. Would fencing or buffering of some type help you a little bit?
I mean, some kind of an acoustical, you know, wall. I mean, either the condensing unit was set up on the roof with the exhaust fans and stuff, and some kind of an acoustical wall was put up just to buffer the sound, I mean, that would help.
Would it help you in terms of just buffering you from that property?
Yeah, I, yeah, for just for-
If you have a buffer now, I-
I mean, I don't, I mean, I really don't care how it looks, because, I mean, right now, I mean, that, I mean, I got a plaza across the street, you know, we got that mobile station that's going to crumble down any day, and, you know, with this there and plaza behind me, so, you know, the aesthetics of it doesn't really bother me, it's just the noise and the odors that's my main concern, so.
Well, I appreciate you listening and-
Absolutely.
And, you know, I wish you would have come and seen me and just talked to me about what you're going to do, and maybe we could iron this out ahead of time, so, you know.
I'd like to respond. First of all, the walk-in cooler can be six foot tall inside, I can make whatever size I want, okay. And if it was seven and a half, seven and a half feet tall, the compressor for that size, that unit's probably going to be a half-gauge, which hardly makes any noise. I mean, with all due respect, the road noise is going to be louder.
I, I, please, address the board.
The road noise is louder than the compressor, trust me. And the compressors that were on the convenience store, there was a lot more of them making noises and so forth there, so. In my eyes, that's not going to be an issue, and if it does become an issue, I'm sure we can address it, no problem. And I just, was wondering, which property do you stay in, living in? Behind me?
Blossom.
The next house over?
Yep.
Did you just purchase that place?
No, we bought it a hundred years ago.
Oh, did he? Okay. Because I remember there was a house, probably the house next year was the one for sale, right?
Yeah.
Okay. As far as garbage and as far as rats and whatever, you know, we have, you know, 15 locations, and every one of them have reputable town references, if necessary, I can present to them. And we already are in Penfield, if you're welcome to go see our operation in Penfield, see how that looks, and you can see that we run a tight ship as far as that goes, so.
Well, it's in your interest to run a clean place, as well, obviously.
Right, besides that, exactly.
Sure, of course.
That's it.
All right, anyone else in the audience?
No, wait. Did you want to respond?
Well, I also just wanted to add that there are no, the two entrances to the building are both in the front, there's no, not a rear exit for the kitchen, so there would be no noises coming out of the back of the building, it would be both coming out of the front. So in our floor plan, the entrances, entrance and exit are on the north facade of the building, so I don't think there would be that much noise coming from there either.
And there were a lot of refrigerator units in the convenience?
Yeah, a huge, huge amount, like for, you know, typical gas station amount of refrigerated.
And those all had compressors?
Right on the top of the building, mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you all very much. I think that was the last application, so we'll take a brief recess and then reconvene in the back of the room?
Yeah.
Let's reconvene, and let's start with number one.
Okay, I'm going to make a seeker motion first.
All right.
Did you not want to?
No, I, nobody's here for number one, but, no, we started, we started, let's finish. But let me interrupt on the seeker. Pete, this is, this was also not coordinated?
Well, so it's really, it's really a new action, so it's really a type-two action because it's a, like a lot line, it's a variant, a setback variance.
Okay.
Which is called out as a type-two action.
Okay. So I do want to say, though, for the record, I want to make a motion to classify this as a type-two seeker action. This is a type-two based on the variance requested for this project.
Second.
Okay.
Requiring no further action.
So let me, so we have a motion to classify it as a type-two in a second. Pete, is there, in your opinion, is that a correct conclusion, it's type-two based upon the fact that it's a, in essence, a shed, okay?
Yeah, well, because it's a type-two, because it's a grant, because under seeker, granting of an individual setback and lot line variance is specifically set forth as a type-two action.
Okay, no significant impact?
No further.
You don't need to do that because it's a type-two.
Because it's a type-two. So the reason I'm asking is, I'd like to make it clear, we did hear from a neighbor, I think, about type-one, a lot of seeker issues, issues with the short form. Jim asked the applicant representative some questions about the acreage. Any of those issues at all?
It's good that those were clarified. I don't remember who asked those questions about it really being like, for this action, we're really only talking about that shed. So this property is also covered by the conservation easement, and so the applicant will have to comply, already has to comply with the conservation easement. And I think that same witness had some points raised about being the farm area, farmstead area. I think, you know, I'll leave that to the applicant to make any arguments about whether or not this already complies if it's approved with the farm area, but I would add a condition, even though it already is going to apply, that, you know, that if you approve this, that it would be subject to compliance with the conservation easement as amended, particularly it's been amended, to reflect where the farm area is and what the project was. I still remember, I don't remember the specifics of the amendment, but it was done after the planning board approval in contemplation of, you know, of the project being approved, which included the water quality device, but it's a backwater, but this would be, you know, to the extent that this is a structure, which kicks into the variance, you want to make sure that it complies still.
Anything else that you want to comment on, on the seeker issue? That's-
Not on seeker, no.
Okay. So we have a motion to declare the type-two action requiring no further action under seeker, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Yeah, and my comments about the easement were more, if you're going to grant the-
Yes.
Not the easement, yeah, the easement and the condition would be with respect to the variance.
Right.
Okay. So after lengthy consideration tonight, I am going to make a motion to approve this variance for a six-foot variance, subject to conservation easement as amended. The reason why I am asking that this be approved is that this facility cannot be placed anywhere else. It has to be a certain dimension in order to service the facility, and that requires a certain coverage, whether it's a hot box or the shed. But I think that this structure fits in nicely with the existing environment, and I think it's an improvement on the environment, and it also reduces any kind of glare issue, so I am going to ask for this to be approved.
Second. Any further discussion?
I'm going to agree. I think aesthetically, for what the neighborhood, or any neighborhood, a big polished steel structure versus a, you know, wood, not reflective building is probably more desirable in an open area.
The only thing I would add is that a number of the concerns that we heard from neighbors were really concerns about the project outside this application. And that's, we get that a lot, and that's okay, but it's just, it's important to note that there wasn't a lot.
The issue at hand is the variance, the setback.
Yeah.
And one neighbor actually did speak in favor of having the shiny metal structure versus the shed.
Correct, or a fiberglass.
Or.
I don't, that didn't seem like it would fit, but in any event. So a motion to approve with a condition and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number two.
Number two, that is a type-two action under seeker, no further review required.
Second.
Who's second then?
Joe.
I'm sorry.
You were right. And, Andres made the motion, Joe second. The seeker motion. Any, any further discussion?
Did you hear what the seeker was?
Yes, type-two.
Two, no further.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
I'm going to make a motion to approve this storage structure. I think with the layout of the property, he's positioned it, or proposed to position it in a place where the view is very difficult to see. None of the trees are being disturbed, the hedge roads along the backside, across Scarborough, that's all going to stay. I think it is heavily wooded in a sense for that lot. If anything, the roof line probably will stick up two, three feet higher than the existing structures that are there, so I don't think they'll be very visible. The existing barn that's on there sits much, much higher in the air as well, so this will be a lower structure. I am going to condition it upon- Um, I am gonna condition it upon, uh, that this is used for personal and, you know, personal residential use, 'cause he did indicate this is for his RV, that's why he's building it, um, and, and for that purpose, for, you know, storage.
For personal.
Correct, correct, um, and that not for commercial use.
Yep.
And that's it.
In, in order to ensure that it does do that, if that's what you want it to do, there are ways, I mean, you could put some type of a restrictive covenant or something on the property to ensure that others don't come in, I mean, the neighbor had a bill at, if somebody comes at a later date and starts taking it over and utilizing it for...
Well, I think any business that comes in would have to come before us as well, correct?
Well, yeah, but things happen after you guys go in.
That's the institutional memory.
Well, the easement is gonna be, the easement's gonna run with the land, it'll be, it would be an easement with conditions.
For personal use.
For personal, non, non-commercial use.
Many, many years ago, we had, and you probably remember, we were doing it, we had a lot of barns out in East Penfield that people were asking for to build, that, oh, people, I had a most, but, but what they were doing was they were trying to build barns to repair cars, store. We did have a format that we used to ensure that they did not use it for anything but for personal storage.
Is there, is there a better way to condition that?
No, I think he's, I think you're right on target, I mean...
Was there another, uh...
It was a, it was a covenant that you had that stated, and it was recorded in the county clerk's office, so that it could be picked up for potential buyers to know that they can't...
Yeah, that would then put it in the chain of title.
Okay.
So, maybe impose a, like, the, how the planning board would impose a condition, uh, or a restriction placed in...
Yeah, we could have the attorney review it to make sure it's appropriate.
Please.
Okay, anything else? No? All right, so we have a motion to approve with conditions, excuse me, and I think we have a second.
No.
I'll second.
Okay, so now we have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, uh, number three, um, I am going to make a seeker motion that this is an unlisted action, um, but there are no indications of any significant impact to the environment, and therefore, I'd make a motion for a negative declaration.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, so a motion to declare it unlisted and to also issue a negative declaration, all those in favor? Aye. Uh, and I am gonna make a motion to approve, and, uh, my reason for that is I think that, uh, the traffic on Empire Boulevard is enough that the variance request for a second sign, although honestly, evidence supporting it was not substantial, but in my opinion was enough to justify it. Uh, also, the placement of the, uh, sign, I think, is appropriate, um, because they, there are a lot of signs in that area, and I do agree that it does line up, and it's not gonna stick out. I understand, that is my application, and, uh, it needs a second. If it doesn't give it, it doesn't give it.
I'm gonna second it, um, purely for the fact, I know normally I'm a one-building mound, one street, but the applicant did, uh, provide enough references of other buildings in the area that we have granted exceptions for multiple building mounds and monuments just in that area, so I think, you know, that also stays consistent.
Okay, Mike?
I, you know, I think I made it clear that I, I really don't see how it accomplishes anything, uh, to have those building mound signs. It isn't accomplished by the monument sign. Um, it's, it's not a retail thing, it's, it's corporate headquarters, um, just the position that it's in, uh, I don't see where any of the second sign accomplishes anything. For that reason, I think, you know, I can't see it.
How about the, um, setback?
Setback, I have no problem.
Okay, um, well, um, if you guys wanna chime in on the, on the motion, that's fine too, and then we could continue the conversation, the motion...
I guess I don't have a problem with it, I know, he kinda did the building for the signs, and it's kinda putting the horse before the cart, or the cart before the horse, but it probably would look good, and I understand your, your, uh, thinking, and I guess I really don't have a problem with those.
Yeah, I, not that I would advocate for this, but a, uh, if the freestanding sign were larger, it would e, uh, weaken even more the argument for the second one, but I, you know, that's, it's within the size that it can be, so I get that.
They, they made an effort to cut the signs down, the monument sign, in order to get the building sign, so you get credit.
Marie? Then you don't have to, I'm just, wanna give you the opportunity.
Yeah, no, I, um, I'm actually against it, because this is not a retail location, and I just don't feel like it's...
That's, I, that's a fair point, that, uh, traffic in and out is not, I don't think anyone would anticipate it's gonna be the same as Dollar Tree or Dollar Store, whatever it's called.
Just don't think they're equivalent.
Right, I understand. Okay, so we have a motion to approve with a second, further...
Careful now, I mean, you wanna separate the, the monument sign?
No, my motion is to approve all, all three.
Okay.
All requests.
Okay, no problem.
Um, I want you to be clear when you're voting that that's what my motion is.
Yeah, okay, well, it was, was for them, not me.
Oh, no, okay, you know, I get it. Um, well, all right, so in fairness to you guys, I will withdraw my motion, and I'll make a new motion, I'll make a motion to approve the monument sign, the special permit for the monument sign and the location that they're requesting, and with the size that they're requesting.
Second.
She seconded.
She seconds that. Okay, so on the monument sign...
The monument sign.
Motion, um, all those in favor? Aye. All right, uh, and again, I'll renew my request, my request, my motion to approve the two building mounted signs, the variance for that based upon the same arguments I've made.
I'll second it.
We have a second on that, any further discussion?
No, she's writing.
Okay.
I know, it's hard, we, we speak quickly sometimes, so is he...
The second one is for the two, the house sign.
Yes.
The variance for two building mounted signs.
And, and just seconded it.
Yeah.
Let us know when you're ready.
All right, so what, was there a vote on the second one yet?
No.
Okay, I'm ready.
All right, so a motion to approve with a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye, fair, aye.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's why we separated them.
Number four.
Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion that this is an unlisted action under seeker, uh, no further, no environmental impact.
So, neg, dec?
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? Oh, I'll second that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, any, uh, further discussion on the seeker motion for number four? All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
Uh, as to the conditional use permit, um, I'm gonna move that we grant that. Um, Jim is, the, the, the staff would be involved in, um, exhaust, cleanup, stuff to ensure that...
And call compliance as well, um, you know, we watch these places, they do have a good track record on Route 250, we haven't had any issues.
You know, I think it's, it's, it's a proper use for that property, it's been vacant for two years, I think it's, uh, consistent with the neighborhood, although it does, but one residence, um, there, you know, there's been commercial there for a good number of years, um, and I think it'll be a welcome addition.
And you like pizza.
Yeah. Who do you smell?
So, right, any, uh, conditions that you can think of? I, I'm not suggesting any, but I don't...
Um, I think, you know, you want to...
Well, other than the, you know, the standard, but, uh...
Number of tables, no more than two you wanted, um...
Right.
Well, before you say that, I mean, there is a code require, state code requirement, identify some tables you can have based on the square footage of the area, I don't know what that is right now, ten by ten, but whatever it is.
Okay.
So, if he's allowed three, and he wants footery, or only two, that's...
Kinda like what you dealt with across the street at the Plaza, you know, they're quite...
So, are you suggesting that the condition be as many as is allowed by state code?
State code, it's not that many, I mean, it's probably not more than two or three, uh, 'cause it's, it's not a big area.
They have to comply.
Well, but you can restrict it more, as, whatever you're comfortable with it.
I mean, there's commercial next door to there.
I would say more importantly, for the neighbor's sake, is the neighbor still here?
No.
No, for the neighbor's sake, I would say, it's, it's not that many that you have out there, I think if it's, if you meet the state code, you're probably gonna be no more than three or four max. The key is, you might wanna set some conditions as to what...
Trash cans.
Well, that, and I, I'm sure he'll have to do that, but more importantly, in a certain time, you, you can't use it at night anymore, I mean, I think you're closing at probably 10 o'clock most nights, but midnight some nights, and certainly you don't want anybody out there at midnight.
So, dusk is it?
So, I would say, you know...
Dusk, fair to say? In the summer, when people are gonna eat outside, you could stay out there till 9 o'clock, probably.
And, and I think it's gonna be contingent, and it sounds like they wanna be good neighbors, but they're gonna have to be good neighbors, so if, you know, if they've gotta close it down at 9 or 10 o'clock or something like that, if, if we start getting complaints from the neighbors saying, hey, they're out there at 10 o'clock or 10:30, and it's driving me nuts, 'cause I'm in bed, Dad.
Are you gonna have lighting there, on that patio area? Just put something in the on, and replace that...
So, yeah, you could say, I think, yeah.
So, then I would restrict it.
Yeah, till like 10 o'clock, is there any problems that you feel? Okay.
Mosquitoes are all by then, maybe. Well, before then.
What about outdoor music or anything like that?
Why, no, they didn't want it, and I don't, I don't blame them, it's just the money they gotta put out on the outside of the building. They can have pipe music inside the building, which everybody does, but...
I saw some, that's an issue.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's, a lot of times an issue, especially since they are kinda close to the neighborhood.
Yep.
So, that stipulation is there, no, the, the eating outside up till 10 o'clock?
Yep, and I think that's fair, and I, you know, they probably wanna go out there cleaning up after 10 o'clock anyways. The other thing, too, is, uh, refuse hauling is an issue, um, they're, they're gonna have to work with a refuse hauling company and register who they're using with us, so we know who they are. They don't, they're not gonna know if there's a pickup at 5 o'clock in the morning, 'cause they're still home sleeping themselves, but the neighbor next door is gonna know, and I wanna make sure that, you know, we know who they are, so...
And typically, uh...
7 a.m.
The collectors don't allow a customer to choose the pickup time?
No, I mean, they just go and do it when they, they can get, they can do it, um, we're having some problems on Route 215, 441 right now, because they've got them coming in at 5:10, 5:20, and that's been a real problem for the neighborhood, I don't wanna see that happening to these guys. And, you know, and a lot of times, it's not even the proprietor's fault, because they don't know it. They don't know until I get a call, then I have to call them and tell them it's an issue.
No, I, I get, I guess what I'm asking is that can, can an owner of a business say, hey, lilac, I wanna hire you, but I don't want you coming any earlier than 10 o'clock?
They sure can.
They can.
And that's how we get a resolve, because they'll go back to their guys and say, hey, I'm not gonna use you anymore if you don't start complying with my requirements.
Yeah.
Because the end result is they're the guys that get stuck having to deal with it, because now they, they lose their permit, that's right. So, they're gonna, they're always gonna try and help comply, and they have in the past, I mean, everybody's tried to do it, but you get a guy who beats up to 5 o'clock in the morning, and what does his route, and he's out of there by 7, so...
Yeah, but that's stuff that you handle, I mean, we, the more conditions we put on it, I mean, you handle with them.
Right.
They handle, but you go, eh, eh, so I don't know why we should put any more conditions on it.
Because I want it in the resolution.
Yeah, because otherwise, there is no hammer.
That's right, if it's in the resolution...
You're not gonna lose the permit.
Okay.
And we're gonna be doing this with all commercial users.
So, what's, what's the time?
Yeah.
7 a.m.
7 a.m.
Especially for the neighbor next door, he doesn't want, because generally, they're picking these things, they're not just, they're not doing what they do at your house, they're picking them up.
Yeah, banging, banging them back on the ground.
Yeah, they're big commercial...
I know we haven't had a second yet, but, um, I think the one thing that one neighbor mentioned is the acoustic, you know, the noise type thing, and I think the applicant did say if there is an issue, they would take care of it, so I want, at some point, make that known in there as well.
Yeah.
I'll second it, you seconded?
Okay, so that's a...
So, that's the conditional use.
Conditional use permit?
Yep.
Any, any further conditions or further discussion about that? And we've done the seeker. All right, on the conditional use permit, we have a motion to approve and a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Okay, on the, uh, the rear setback, uh, the 6.33, or whatever it was, uh, for the walk-in cooler, I'm gonna move to grant a variance there. I think the biggest issue I had with it would be the noise, and I think the compressors aren't gonna be any greater than, and maybe less, probably less noisy than what they had there before.
Yep.
With all those refrigeration units, uh, for the gas station. Um, I think it's somewhat buffered by the, the wooden fence in the back, I, I just don't think it's gonna have an adverse impact on the neighborhood.
I'll second. Further discussion on the setback request? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
All right, with regard to the two building mounted signs, um, this is a small property, um, you got a sign in the corner on the front, freestanding, you got one on the side, I don't really see the need for the second one, uh, it wasn't on the old building, where I think the use before that, which was when it was a, um, convenience store, so, uh, my motion is to deny that.
Yeah, let, let me ask you a question, uh, are you saying they can have two signs, either or, in other words, one building mounted, one post, or two building mounted, no post?
Well, when I asked that question, I got, uh, they wanted all three, so...
Yeah, right.
On that basis, I'm denying it.
Okay, so in other words, they're only allowed one building and one post?
Right.
Okay.